Recording in progress.
We're ready? We're good?
Okay.
Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission Conference Meeting this February 16th, 2021. Wow, we're deep into 21 already. So I just have something short to read. We will continue to host our meetings in virtual as well as in-person format. And if you want to sign up, if you're appearing virtually and you want to sign up to speak, please visit bit.bit.ly/virtualccmeetings. That's bit.ly/virtualccmeetings, plural. Now, to help ensure decorum, and we ask that you please abide by the following guidelines. Number one, please refrain from any behavior that is disruptive, distracting, or painful, inhibits the meeting in any way. Number two, while you're on the phone waiting for your opportunity to speak, please mute whatever broadcast you are viewing us on, and this will help avoid delays in the broadcast. I will call upon you when it is your turn to speak and also to notify you when your time has expired. The city staff has automatically added speakers in the to-listen-only mode, and you will be unmuted to speak when you're recognized. Once you have completed speaking, you will be muted and may either hang up to exit the meeting or stay connected to listen to the remainder of the meeting and enjoy the afternoon. So having said that, let us begin. Want to take roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Commissioner Moritas?
Here.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Here.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Here.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Here.
Mayor Trent House?
Here, so thank you. We have full attendance. Hope you're all doing well these days. And I just want to say that as I'm looking at this agenda, I see that City Commission Reports has been brought to the end of the agenda. Let me ask you this. If we were able to limit our commission reports to like eight to 10 minutes each, we could do that at the beginning of the meeting because we have quite a few people who have signed up for Business Three, and I think that might take us through most of the afternoon. Does that make sense to you folks? Do you think you can limit your comments to like eight to 10 minutes? Is that possible?
Good with me. Ben here.
Okay, Vice Mayor? Are you there?
Yes. Yes, can you hear me, Mayor?
We can hear you fine.
Okay, because I'm having issues hearing you once in a while and others, and I might have to just call in a little bit. Actually, it's better when I take the camera off.
You faded into the ozone. We can't really hear you. Commissioner McKenzie, is that good with you?
I do better. I'm not doing anything.
You're all frozen on me now.
Commissioner Moritas, you good with that? Yeah, eight to 10 minutes, we can do that?
Yes, I don't think I ever go over eight to 10 minutes.
Okay, all right. All right, so why don't we begin with, we'll try to just take less than a half an hour to get through this, and then we can spend the rest of the afternoon on the items that are on the agenda. So Commissioner Moritas?
Yes, now I actually, right, ready?
Is your mic on?
I believe so. Can y'all hear me?
Yeah, now we can.
Okay, thank you. Oh, let's see, skim this over real quick. Good to see you all today, and thank you for helping. You know, vacation rentals is one of the priorities we voted on as a commission to support. Actually, what we're doing is opposing the Vacation Rental Bill that's currently being heard in committees right now in Tallahassee, and we're losing so far, so please stay vigilant. You're going to get emails from my office, and I think others are sharing them too. Maybe that this issue really affects District One, and I know Commissioner Sorenson, Ben, this really affects your district too.
Huge, yes.
So I know we are both burdened by the inability to regulate vacation rentals, so we'll keep you posted. My office is working with Daphne. She's doing a great job too. We spent about an hour and a half at my District One meeting last night with Daphne, just discussing this whole issue. And so we're really, there is chatter too, they're like, what's going on in Fort Lauderdale? So I did hear back that they are hearing from us in Tallahassee, so we'll keep this up. So thank you, Ben, for sharing things about this too, and anybody else who is.
Thanks for your work.
So smoking on the beach, I don't believe, that is going favorably for us too. So so far, that one's looking good. We may have some hope for that. Let's see, that's just legislative meetings, let's see. So one issue I do want to discuss, I am hearing some chatter about spring break now and the possibility of us having a lot of visitors. What, I don't know.
So, Mr. City Manager, how are we responding to the weeks of spring break?
So at this point, we are planning as though spring break would happen as normal, and so it's better to be prepared and not need it than not be prepared and need it. We've heard from some colleges that have just shortened the school year and are not having a spring break. I still think, as I mentioned in our last meeting, we'll still have higher-than-normal activity during this time of the year. Getting some reports out of Miami Beach that they've already started to see some crowds. So we are prepared if it's a spring break like any other year.
So we're prepared, but would we consider any action as a commission if we see an influx or too many people on our beaches? I mean...
I've heard Mayor Geller talk about the possibility, if it's needed but not coming out of the box ahead of time with a curfew, if in fact that would help, but they don't want to start there, and there has been no discussion at this point about closing the beach.
Okay, so I mean, I think it would need to be a countywide effort, really maybe a tri-county effort, or at least...
So let me, last week, we had a mayor's meeting with the county mayor, and this issue came up, and the mayor heard from all the mayors as to whether or not we would ever want to have a curfew. And there was mixed opinions on that. He was going to take the issue back to his county commission, and he wanted emergency authority in case things got out of hand. I mean, I don't see anything getting out of hand in terms of conduct. We don't really have a problem with conduct. It's just the intensity of the event, more and more people coming here. The beach has never really been an issue, as we've discovered, it's after-beach, you know. I pray beach, when people congregate in hotel rooms or restaurants and bars, that's when it becomes difficult. But oftentimes, that activity takes place during the day or after the beach. They talked about a curfew, you know, from 11 o'clock or 10 o'clock on. Well, by that time, there may not be a need. So it's going to be tough to manage these crowds if they do materialize. Does anybody on the commission have any thoughts about that? No? All right, so, yeah.
Ben, I just, I mean, I share Heather, Commissioner Moritas' concern, and just, I think as we get more info, I think we need to be talking about this, you know, at each commission meeting, especially the next one, to see what we're hearing and just plan that we can address what happens. I just, I think we have to be prepared.
Well, the colleges have, for the most part, eliminated spring vacation. Nonetheless, since most kids aren't going to college in class, you know, they'd rather sit in front of their computer on a sunny beach as opposed to a rainy, cold day, or snow for that matter. And nobody knows where they're at, so we may see an influx. We're starting to see more, I mean, I don't know about you, but this weekend was the most unbelievable weekend of people on the roads and on the beach. It was, you know, we're really starting to see seasons start here. So, but let's, I think we all appreciate your concern, Commissioner Moritas, and I think what Ben has just said, I think, let's just monitor it, and then at our next meeting, we'll be able to make any decisions if we feel necessary.
Right, and we did discuss this at my District One last night also. I just want to see how they felt, because I would support shutting down the beach personally, but, you know, I had mixed reactions from my neighbors in my district. Some didn't think it was a good idea, some did. So I don't know right now, but I really don't want the message to be that Fort Lauderdale is having, you know, a normal spring break this year, because we're not.
And that is the message.
Right, well, I don't know if they're getting it. I've heard, I have people, I have intel that live with me, and I pay their bills. But, so I hear things that are starting to bubble, but anyways, even though the schools don't have spring break. Okay, so enough of that. We have to be prepared, because we're going to have to continue this conversation. So I have a ribbon cutting at the Galt on Friday night, if anyone would like to attend. I believe it's 5:30. We're going to celebrate the project is done in the Galt. We did 32nd and 33rd Street.
Well, the streets are done.
We are still going to install some decorative lighting, a little café lighting that's coming. We're working with Ben. Ben's office and Phil are doing a great job, so thank you all for that. And it's just going to be a small, little gathering at the Beach Community Center, but I'll make sure you all get that information, and the businesses are excited about that. And then we are also moving forward with, I've had my first meeting with the new Galt Mile Association condo and their president, Fred Nesbit, and their board, they're doing well. You know, a few people are stepping up to take over for PO, and we will, we're moving forward with that project too. That's a little bit different. That's an assessment that the condos will each pay, and we're navigating that right now as well, so that project should start soon. It will come to the commission for a vote pretty soon. I'll keep you all updated, once we do the community outreach with all the neighbors. So, let's see, Lockhart, I just want to talk about that real quick, Chris, and then I think that'll be it for me. I won't go over too many other things. So Lockhart, excited about that. You know, next year... Well, excited about moving forward with it, actually. I think, you know, we have 20 acres sitting there. It's been two years. ACOM's, you know, finishing up their community outreach. EDSA did a great job designing the park plans, the schematics, the pictures. We had community outreach for a year on the park space. I think we're able to kind of move forward with that. We are not at the point we can move forward with the community center, but we can wait, according to all the construction design folks. We can wait on that community center, but our comprehensive agreement with Inter Miami says that this park really will be built by next summer. So I believe we really just need to move forward with that, so we can keep the terms of our comprehensive agreement, and we'll probably just put down some grass where the community center will go eventually. But we just have a couple of things going on with the community center, some possibilities that I just don't think will be fully vetted by the time they need to. So as long as, I don't think it's a commission vote or anything, I just want you all to feel comfortable with it. You know, the 20 acres, we'd start working with Inter Miami again and saying, let's just move forward.
Can you share some of those schematics that you spoke of?
Yes, and I have shared them with you all, but it's been a while. It was before COVID. I can certainly share, it's on the virtual park, well, ACOM prepared.
Is it? Okay.
It's on that. Theirs looks a little bit different. Pretty much the same, though, but, I mean, programmatically, it's two large fields that can be used for soccer and/or other activities. It's a kickball field, there's a large dog park for the big dogs, smaller dog park, some passive space, large playground, a lot of walking trails, hopefully a lot of mature trees. We'll have to negotiate that with them. That might not be, it wasn't clearly spelled out in the comprehensive agreement, what type of landscaping, but I'm sure we'll work through that, and some lighting, so that's kind of it. And the community center, obviously, in a splash pad, will be up for the city to build when we're ready. So I think we just kind of start moving forward with the fields.
I encourage everybody else in the commission to do the same.
Okay.
All right, great, thank you.
I'll stop there. I'll stop there. Go ahead.
Uh, Vice Mayor, can you hear us?
Vice Mayor? Can, can you hear me, Mayor? I'm, I actually had a call in. I'm on my phone. I just hit star six. Is this okay?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Yes, and I apologize for all of my technical difficulties, but.
Okay, we're trying to keep all reports down to eight to 10 minutes if we can, so, because we have.
I don't even have that. I'll, I'll, I'll be good. Thank you. Uh, very quickly, it was a pleasure to be at the Playground Ribbon Cutting at Bennett Elementary with you, Mayor. Uh, I love the concept of the joint use parks, all of the playgrounds with the schools and working with the city to create new park spaces. It's terrific and I look forward to doing a lot more, uh, of that in our city. Um, had a good meeting on Tuesday, the 9th with the, uh, International Swimming Hall of Fame Board of Directors. Thursday, February 11th, um, Commissioner Starnson and I convene the, um, final La Solos Mobility Working Group meeting prior to today's report um, to the commission. So I wanted to thank Commissioner Starnson for all of his work on that and to all of the stakeholders and all of the presenters in the Corridino Group. Um, almost a two-year process and, uh, it's amazing how much love is coming out of that as I'm sure everyone's been reading their emails. You see, there's no, nothing controversial at all, so that'll be easy this afternoon when we, when we hear the, uh, presentation, I'm sure. Um, this Wednesday, actually tomorrow evening, Seven Isles Homeowners Association meeting, looking forward to that. Thursday, the 18th, Bonnet House Board of Directors meeting. On the 19th, I'll be attending the Solid Ways Working Group. Uh, that will be a virtual meeting. Um, Tuesday, the 23rd, South Middle River Civic Association. Um, and then on Wednesday, the 24th in the evening, uh, I'll be a panelist on a Chamber Cultural Event, also with the Cultural Division. Uh, looking forward to talking about government's role in the arts and culture. Um, looking forward to that panel very much. Thursday, the 25th, uh, I'll be hosting the District Two Neighborhood Presidents Roundtable. Looking forward to that. We'll have the folks from the Parks Bond there. Uh, we'll also have our new District Two person from Transportation and Mobility. Um, always a good group and we'll be sharing all of that new information with them. I'll also have on Thursday, the 25th, the Andrews Avenue Bridge Design Review Meeting. Um, the person that was selected, the artist, is stepping back, so we'll have to reconvene, choose someone else. Um, very quickly, um, Chris, I just hope moving forward that we're gonna start thinking about the Northwest CRA as it starts to sunset. I know that other cities are, are looking at ways to perhaps gain some funding from the county. Um, just wanted to put that on the radar there, um, because right now that corridor is finally popping. Um, and anything we can do to keep that momentum would be great, uh, as opposed to just shutting down completely because it's really starting to take shape in such a positive way. Um, also, Chris, just want to make sure I keep reading articles all over the place, even seeing things on television, on talk shows about how the tech companies from the West Coast are looking to Florida, so I want to just make sure we're in that hunt and we're doing all we can. Uh, and being as aggressive as possible to attract these industries, um, to Fort Lauderdale. That's about it for me, Mayor. Under eight minutes, I think, huh?
Wow, I know you can do it.
I know I can do it too. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner McKenzie, still no report, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Sorenson.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Um, several topics. Filming, Mayor, we've had, we had some just massive challenges in my district the last couple of weeks around filming crews and clogging roads and so forth. So, um.
Are you making a movie again, Commissioner?
They're, they're making a movie of me. It's very low budget. Um, yeah, they're really struggling for our concepts.
Okay.
So, uh, but.
I saw some of the outtakes.
Yeah, it's bad.
It's a comedy.
Comedy. Trying to get the sympathy vote for people to go to see it, but, uh, it's not working so far. Um, so there, there's, I, I think we've really got to look at the timing we allow filming to happen in residential neighborhoods. Um, you know, the, the length of time they can go, coordination and so forth. So, um, I don't know that, maybe we schedule that for a conference meeting, Mayor, or what, what, whatever you think's best to kind of.
Do that, sure. I didn't, I didn't realize that much of an issue, but if it really has become that way, if we're now a, if we're now a destination for, for filmmakers, hey, we might as well have a consistent policy for that.
Yeah, and I think something that, you know, allows and promotes filming, um, but also respects the neighborhood. So, Chris, does that, does that sound good for?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mayor Bahia Mar, a lot of conversation about Bahia Mar. Is that something we're gonna talk about today or another time?
Bring it up, so let me bring it up in my reports.
Okay.
All right.
Great. Yep. Um, let's keep going here. Uh, okay, I think I can, I can stop there. Thanks, Mayor.
Good, okay, very good. Um, I just have a couple of things. I just want to say that, uh, very proud of our city staff for, um, the wonderful, uh, commemorative event that they put together with regard to, uh, February 14th and the, um, Marjorie Stoneman Doug- Douglas, uh, um, event that happened three years ago. It was very, very sad, as we all know. We keep living with the reverberations of what occurred that day. But, um, it was also a call to action for change and, uh, it's great to see all the young people out there. And again, I want to thank George Hruska. I want to thank, uh, everyone who is involved with that, Gina Ellis. And, uh, also our, our police and fire personnel who, who helped protect us while we're out there and help, uh, part of the organization. It's a great event. I want to thank, uh, Commissioner Sorenson for his great words and, uh, uh, you know, while it happened in Parkland, the message, uh, is to be unheard throughout all of America, including Fort Lauderdale. So, um, it was really a wonderful event that Sunday morning. I have a bunch of other things to talk about, but we can skip all that. I, I just want a, a couple of things. Uh, you mentioned Bahia Mar, Commissioner Sorenson, so there's been, um, there's been discussion of late regarding like what's been going on with Bahia Mar. Number of emails have been, uh, discovered that there was activity between Alan Wallow's office and the developer. Uh, we apparently, we hired outside counsel to assist us. The bottom line is that, um, I, I know that I have been visited by the developers recently as last week to discuss the possibility of, of changing the lease, uh, um, making it a 50-year lease so that they could sell condominiums. Uh, that is, that's a requirement with an option for another 50 years, again, for the purpose of, uh, private development on, on that site. Has, is, is there a, uh, an appetite on this commission to want to do that? Um, I know that I've never expressed an interest in that. Is, I mean, I would like to know, like, from all of you, is this something that our city attorney should continue working on? Or is this something that we need to just, um, you know, put aside, let the, let the relationship with the existing lease agreement, uh, remain? Or does this commission have any interest in making changes? Uh, Commissioner, let me poll, let me poll everybody just to get an idea. Um, Commissioner Moritas, do you want to move forward on this and make changes to the lease? Have you thought about this?
Oh, I'm not ready to vote on it today, but I do think it's appropriate for the city attorney to move forward and keep analyzing it.
Okay, all right. How about you, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I did just do star six. I, I just want to mention something before we continue on with this poll. At the January 5th conference meeting, I asked for a Bahia Mar presentation, um, similar to the one that we had that day for the La Solos Marina Presentation. Um, because I had also been concerned about just not having an update. Um, this is a, this is a really important and complex project for the entire city. My issue with this discussion today is that process is really important to me. This is not on the agenda. There are a lot of people that would like to participate in this. This is not noticed for today. I don't even think it's appropriate for us to get into this discussion today. I would like to see it scheduled for a conference agenda, maybe the only thing on that conference agenda. And then we, and then we go at it and then we discuss and folks can come in from the public. Um, but I, I, I just think that doing it this way as part of a commission report where no one out there in the public has any inkling or any idea, I'm just not comfortable with that. Uh, I want to see a full report. I want to see exhibits that include financials. I want to see a total update from the city attorney's office. I have a lot of questions, um, a lot of questions. And I've already expressed some of those to Alan yesterday in our pre-agenda meeting. But I, I just don't think that this is the time. Thank you.
Okay, I get it. Uh, Commissioner McKenzie, what are your thoughts?
I agree with both of the commissioner, um, and the vice mayor. Uh, I would like to see this, but I think we make it a, a conference item, maybe the next conference. And we put the, the issue in front of us. We all see it because we know that we've all talked to, uh, various folks, whether it's the developer or, um, our own attorney. I've been talking about this as I got here, um, and it's definitely me to pick up the phone and call Alan and say, hey, you know, where is the lease? What is, what's going on, even with our city manager? So, um, we have been in dialogue, but not probably in, in, uh, an official, uh, manner, and like the vice mayor alluded to, I would like to have it in front of me and we all discuss it, but most importantly, um, I would like to follow the district commissioner's, um, lead of, this is his district, and so we can have an, uh, an informed, intelligent conversation.
Okay, and Commissioner Sorenson, your thoughts?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Um, yeah, I mean, I, uh, I have major concerns with looking at extending the lease, so I'm, I'm not interested in extending the lease, but I'm happy to have, uh, you know, an, an agenda meeting to kind of talk further and so forth and, uh, about it. And I, I've just, a lot of the stuff that's come out, I've just kind of been in the dark on, and I don't know if that's just me or others, but, uh, uh, I'm, and, and I talked with city attorney about it and city manager and so, um, just, uh, want continued more information about what's happening.
Okay, all right, so, um, Chris, do you?
Well, what I do want to ask Mayor, and what we're concerned, I think we all had the same underlying frustration that we haven't had a conversation. But we all have spoken with our professional staff in regards to this, whether we like it or not. And then for meetings to take place and community input, and we not be abreast of it, uh, I think is where we're having some of the, the concerns, or at least I can speak for myself. So by doing this at a later date, um, and not seeing it written somewhere or that, you know, these things happen and we weren't a part of the process because we are the policymakers, we are the process. And we are a consensus commission, and that's the way it should go down. So I really respect, um, Vice Mayor and, and how he, um, crowned the phrase that, uh, he would like to vet it in its entirety.
Okay, very good. All right, so Chris, do you think, um, I don't know about when it would be the next conference meeting?
Probably the next one I could get it on where it would be the only item would be March the 16th.
Okay, so is that good with everybody? March 16th, the next, uh, the, the next closest date for, that would be two meetings from now?
It's two meetings from now. The, the meeting of the second, I've already got four items on the conference agenda, so.
All right, so that gives us enough time to reach out to our community neighbors and, uh, uh, get a feel for what people are, are saying and wanting. And, um, so we'll mark that day, March 16th, conference meeting, 1:30, City of Fort Lauderdale Chambers. Thank you. Um, motorcycles on the beach. Um, we continue to be terrorized by, uh, motorcycle individuals as well as gatherings. Um, I, I get people who send me videos, uh, all weekend. Uh, it, we just, it has gotten completely out of hand. This is not the first time we've talked about it. Um, uh, we need to make this another agenda item at the conference meeting because we need to do something. Um, uh, e- even if we need to restrict motorcycles on weekends on the beach, uh, I'm, I'm ready for that because these people terrorize other motorists, they terrorize pedestrians, and they create a very unsafe and unfriendly environment at a, and, and, and a place where we're trying to be family-friendly and, um, and trying to make people come to our, our community, uh, and, and feel safe and comfortable. And when you have hundreds of bikers, you know, roaming up and down our streets like this, you know, it's gone out of hand. And I don't think we're doing anything about it. And we're just, just wringing our hands and saying, oh, woe is me, woe is me. I brought it up multiple times before. Nothing has gotten done, nor we, nothing has been done. And, uh, and we really, so I'd like you to put that on another agenda, uh, if you could, Chris.
Okay.
See what we're gonna do to address that.
Hey, Mayor, can I speak to that, please?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I, I guess my concern is we instructed, as a commission, uh, that police would take the lead, come back with a plan of action, um, as to what works and what isn't working. And I know you got some phone calls, uh, and maybe some other commissioners. Um, I didn't get any, but I see this activity throughout our whole city, not just on the barrier island.
Do you see it throughout, is it across the city too?
When we talked collectively last time, I gave you examples of how they get, they don't just come to the beach by parachute. They come from the west and maneuver through the city to get to places where they can display their, their activities. So it's all over the city, but I thought police had a policing plan in place and, and instead of us sitting in a room just talking about all the photos we got and all the emails, police deals with traffic day in and day out. Maybe they tell us what they're doing, what can work, what won't work, or at least give us some feedback on what we asked them to do or charged them with the last time we spoke, which was two meetings ago.
So Commissioner, that's a very good point, and the police has, uh, the police department has implemented an operations plan, I think, the last several weekends. I saw some of the statistics from that, uh, in those enforcement actions. I don't know if, uh, Chief Alvarez wants to, uh, speak just quickly to it now. We can certainly put it on an agenda, but.
Well, is he prepared? I don't want it, I don't want to ambush him here. Is he prepared to speak on this?
Probably.
And, and Ms. Mayor, as he comes up, we did look into, you had, uh, asked whether legally we could ban motorcycles. And, uh, we've looked into that issue. We can't ban, there's obviously things we can enforce uh, with regards to, uh, noise, muffling, speed, and obviously reckless driving.
How do we, how do we ban scooters?
Because we are able to do that by statute, and as Commissioner McKenzie had correctly pointed out, I think, two meetings ago, these are licensed and registered vehicles, so we lose a lot of control over that because the state of Florida really, uh, under, I believe, Chapter 316 regulate that. So it, it does unfortunately come down to a lot of enforcement. We just can't outright ban them because they're registered vehicles.
Some of them are not street legal, am I correct? I mean, I see the ATVs, I see what are the dirt bikes? I, I mean, I don't know all the language, but they don't seem like they're legal on the streets, so.
But those are the ones that we can target, Commissioner Moritas. If you don't, if you have some, if I have a car and I have no license and no registration, I get pulled over and I get a citation, I have to appear to court, it's a thing I have to do to, to, to use that vehicle back on the road. So I think if we get back to enforcement like we're all, I think we're all alluding to, um, we can weed out the bad apples because I may want to get on my Harley on Sunday and go down the beach, you know, and, and, uh, you know, enjoy the breeze. But a few bad apples, and a lot of them are exactly what you just pointed out, Commissioner. Um, um, no license, uh, no helmets, no insurance, and they're just wreaking havoc throughout the city. And, um, I'm sure our police has, 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 has addressed this. I just think we just need them to either come back at a later date, like you said, Mayor, or, and just give us what they're doing and we tweak it, since we really don't have the overall authority from, um, Department of State Motor Vehicles to ban.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner.
Uh, Mayor Commissioner, it's just, you know, we, we are aware of this problem. We've run three action plans on three consecutive Sundays. The issue that's posed to us is that we don't know when they're coming here. So we have established these.
I can tell you when they're coming. They're coming every Saturday and every Sunday. They're there every single weekend. They're on A1A. You, if you're the only one that doesn't know this, everyone else knows this. I'm telling you, it's very frightening. We see this activity.
We, we, we have seen it. We are aware, but we did, uh, on two occasions have completely staffed. In the time we were here, they did not show up. So what we decided to do is try to have like an intelligence route to figure out when they're going there, based on social media, when other agencies call us, so we can gather our troops out there and try to address this.
Can't we just station people up there all day?
We can, we can.
And what's wrong with that?
It's very expensive. Hoping that they come here. It's something that we can certainly look at, uh, based on the days that they have been here. We have on the beach issued hundreds of citations. I don't have the exact amount, but we have issued hundreds of citations. It's when that group comes here, we rely on the intelligence that we have, and that is not always the greatest because it's not a, a planned route that they take. They meet up in groups and then they decide where they're gonna go. But I understand what you're trying to accomplish here, and we're gonna continue trying to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Um, all right, very good. That's, that's all I have to talk about. All right, so let's move on. Anybody else have anything else they want to say? All right, good. All right, so let's move on to business one. Uh, we have United Way of Broward County and overview of the homelessness efforts for fiscal year 2020. Uh, who will be appearing on that?
Let's see who we have from United Way.
See who we have from United Way, so.
Good afternoon. I am here from United Way. My name is Danielle Doss, Vice President of Community Impact.
Hi, Danielle.
Hi, good afternoon. Shall I proceed?
The floor, yes, the floor is yours.
Excellent. Thank you. Good afternoon to all of these esteemed city elected officials as well as the City of Fort Lauderdale residents. I come to you on behalf of United Way of Broward County to present the results of the funding that the city, the city commission so graciously awarded the United Way of Broward County during fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, uh, which is October one, twenty nineteen through September thirty, twenty twenty. With the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was allocated to United Way to provide homeless services to families and individuals in the city of Fort Lauderdale. We utilized about sixty four percent of that funding for a total of four hundred and seventy six thousand, seven, three hundred forty seven and twenty one cents. Uh, that, those dollars were fully, not fully utilized due obviously to the COVID nineteen pandemic. However, despite the pandemic, many of the providers that we contracted with were able to meet and or exceed the original number, original number of individuals and families that we intended to serve with the funding provided. So with the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars allocated, United Way contracted with five community providers. We contracted with Broward Housing Solutions as well as the Salvation Army for rapid rehousing services. We also contracted with Hope South Florida for meal sharing and day respite services. We contracted with Showering Love to provide showers to homeless individuals. Uh, and we also contracted with Memorial Healthcare Systems to provide uh, rental and utility supports, mainly utility supports to individuals uh, coming from the community courts, uh, as well as the E S G, so emergency solutions grant match for the Salvation Army.
Can I, can I interrupt you for just a second, please? Um, I'm a little, um, I'm, I find it troubling, uh, when and I I need to see where we broke down here. We allocated seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and you only used sixty percent of it. It suggests that we didn't have a problem after sixty percent, that there were no more homeless people to address, but in fact, they're all over the streets. What, where was the breakdown here? Was it administrative? Was it, where where was it? Because even during the, even during COVID, we were, we were still trying to place people. So why didn't we, why weren't you able to use all the money, even though we knew that there was a significant problem still in our city?
Sure, great question. So sixty four percent of the funding was utilized as there was an original delay in the on-ramp of the grant because once we agreed with the city to utilize the funding for these services, uh, each of the providers, one had to assume a contract with United Way and then put position into position staff who were going to provide the services. And so indeed, the on start, the start of the services did not begin until January one of twenty twenty. And so once that started, we were able to provide services, January to March, and then the pandemic hit, of course. And each of those providers had to determine how to best provide services with CDC guidelines as well as just make, being very innovative in how they would continue services during the pandemic. And so many of the services began to decline uh, between April to June of twenty twenty two, especially during the April period to just correct course in terms of making sure that we were able to provide services in line with CDC guidelines. And so what we saw during the initial part of the pandemic uh, was a decrease in the meal sharing services as well as day respite services and shower services. Uh, because the providers really couldn't figure out to begin with how to adjust course to make sure that they were social distancing and keeping both the residents of the City of Fort Lauderdale as well as the staff members of those nonprofits safe. Uh, and so what did continue was the provision uh, of of uh, rapid rehousing services. So we were still placing families into houses. So really what you saw uh, in terms of the reduced utilization was due to the COVID nineteen pandemic and making mid-course corrections to make sure we were all safe.
Right, but I mean, after you got through that in April and May, and you you figured out how you could still safely administer these funds. What, I mean, it it, there should have been a backlog of need. And we saw it right over here across the street from us, uh, by the, by the, uh, the, the county library. We saw it materialize near the Jack and Jill Center. We saw it materialize in many different places around the city. Um, uh, I know you folks saw that, saw it too. Couldn't you ramp up to try to help these people instead of leaving them on the street, instead of leaving the money in the bank? Knowing that, you know, we trusted you to to administer these funds so that we could help the homeless. I mean, someone dropped the ball there. What happened?
Sure. I thank you, Mayor. I do believe that the conversation was had with United Way leadership as well as city officials about the need to uh, remove or move the use of the dollars to fit appropriately the services that could be provided during COVID. Uh, I, as I say, the rapid rehousing services did continue, so it wasn't a matter of not placing families into housing. What you see is, again, if we're not able to provide showers or provide meals on site, then those services would would not necessarily be backlog. It would be an uh, helping of those families to access services with providers that are currently continuing service as the contracted writers continue to determine how they best uh, provide services during COVID nineteen. And so uh, families continue to be placed, families continue to be housed and provided with the services that they needed during that time. It was just a matter of a break in services to allow those providers that we contracted with to uh, make those mid-course corrections. So the families continue to receive support.
Okay, I didn't answer my question, but go ahead.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no problem. And so with the providers that we contracted with, Broward Housing Solutions, who were contracted to provide services, housing services to twelve individuals, ultimately housed thirty individuals through their contract. The Salvation Army, which was originally contracted to provide fifteen families with housing, actually ultimately served a hundred and five families. With the E S G match that was provided through the United Way of Broward County, twenty families were able to receive utility supports with the match. Uh, for Showering Love, before the pandemic occurred, they were able to provide showers to ninety two individuals. Uh, Memorial uh, was able to provide sixty seven individuals of the twenty five originally contracted with utilities, mostly utilities, as well as rental support through the community court. Even though the referrals stopped uh, around the third quarter, they were able to continue to work with the families that they were, uh, what we've referred to them from the C O C. And in addition to that, the Hope South Florida organization was able to provide around four hundred and seventy thousand individuals, which is a duplicated count. Um, so duplicated meaning that many of the families that would come to receive meals as well as showers and bus passes, et cetera, from the day respite and meal sharing services came on more than one occasion. Uh, and then at at last, a hundred and eighty families totaled through the day respite services. So ultimately, although there was a break in services due to COVID nineteen, many of the providers were able to meet the intended number served of the homeless individuals that were referred to them from the C O C. And that is the conclusion of my report, but I will take any additional questions.
Okay, does anyone have any questions?
I I do, Mayor. Thank you for joining us today. I appreciate it. I'm just curious, uh, what is happening with the additional unspent money? You all take it and use it next year or is it given back to us? It's about two hundred and seventy three thousand?
Yep. So yes, our services were based on a reimbursement, cost reimbursement. And so any funds that we did not utilize simply remained with the City of Fort Lauderdale.
We keep those. Uh, and I'm sure you evaluate the the different agencies you partner with. It seems like Salvation Army is able to provide rapid rehousing at a lot cheaper rate than Broward Housing Solutions. Maybe we're not looking at the exact same program. But so when you evaluate who to, you know, give money to, do you obviously look at what they're doing and their impact?
Absolutely. We look at their impact. We look at their cost for services and their ability to provide the services in the community. Uh, Broward Housing Solutions uh, more so focuses on working with individuals with mental health diagnosis, which requires uh, additional services above and beyond what Salvation Army would provide, which would slightly increase their costs. But both organizations we find to be very effective, um, great community partners.
Okay, good. Thank you for explaining that.
That's it. Um, thank you for your question.
Mayor, I had a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I'm just very curious, and I know I've asked this question in the years past. How many other municipalities are contributing to this effort, um, besides Fort Lauderdale?
Zero. Who are you asking the question?
Oh, to uh, to our speaker.
Danielle.
Got it. So this particular, thank you for your question, Vice Mayor. This particular initiative was a part of working, partnering with the City of Fort Lauderdale to address residents specifically in the city. So this funding is specifically from the city. There are no other municipalities involved in this particular initiative.
Well, besides just this particular initiative, and I know that also many folks that we find in Fort Lauderdale aren't necessarily from Fort Lauderdale. So that's why I have an issue with that. I just find it very frustrating. Uh, I mean, so aside from this initiative, how many initiatives are other municipalities contributing to in in Broward County?
That's not a question that I can particularly answer.
Okay, although I I think I know the answer anyway. Um, but I I I don't know what we can do about that. I don't know if perhaps we can work with United Way to do some sort of outreach to all of the other municipalities in Broward County. I just don't understand why Fort Lauderdale has to do this alone every year. Um, it, uh, I mean, this is such important work, but yet there should be support from from all of the municipalities in the county there. And I just don't know why we're not doing more to, you know, make that kind of outreach, make that kind of case. Um, and I I I just think it's really something that maybe if we didn't ask, who knows? Maybe someone would step up. Uh, I know these are difficult times now especially. Um, but I just don't know why we as a municipality have to go this alone every single year. So thank you, but and thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Any other questions?
Mayor, have we had the conversation with the county? I I know Miami-Dade has a, what is it, Affordable Housing Trust Fund? I don't believe Broward County does. And does that Affordable Housing Trust Fund cover the homeless population as well, or is it just?
They have a dedicated source of funding also. They, I think they add.
It's a tax.
Tax.
There's a.
Average tax.
They have, they have increased their mileage rate to be specifically assigned towards homelessness and.
Right, but it would make sense that Broward County would have the same.
It would make sense.
It would make sense. Maybe we can talk to Broward County about that, you know, they, because we talk about affordable housing all the time. So if there was a trust fund similar to Miami-Dade, it'd cover our homeless population and fund United Way. And it could also help with all of our affordable housing issues. So.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Again, I just think we go back and I think this commission has done a great job. Previous commission has done a great job with our efforts reaching out to the homeless. I think you sitting on those county um, seats with initiatives was a great job. And I think you and I both agreed last time we brought this issue up. Um, I know we're frustrated with United Way, but they can only do so much. And I think the Vice Mayor hit it um, right on the head. Why don't others participate? But that's not a question that's new, not even for him. And we find ourselves right back at the county's mercy, but the young lady from United Way alluded that the money is for services for the residents of Fort Lauderdale. Probably ninety percent of those people that we are targeting, like the Vice Mayor said, aren't from Fort Lauderdale. But because we're not enforcing anything on the ground, uh, the the homeless population finds it necessary and comfortable to um, lauda on the streets of Fort Lauderdale where it's more comfortable. You don't see the masses in other cities, so therefore, why would we contribute to Fort Lauderdale's issue? So I mean, until we do some out of the box thinking about how we're going to address these folks on our streets, we're not talking about the people who the families that fall through the cracks and ones that we've helped. Um, we address this issue as as a commission and deal with the lauding and and the activities on our streets. We're gonna, in my opinion, we we're gonna force the other cities to um, to uh, to deal with this because as you're uncomfortable in a situation where you're on the streets, you tend to move to another place where you're more comfortable where no one's going to bother you. And even when we took the drastic action, the last mission and and dealt with the women's club, um, the county really didn't do anything but put a gate up and start a construction project over there. That's not completed, if I'm not mistaken. And that population is out of control. I was there yesterday. Um, uh, I mean, some of the things they're doing on our streets, right next to our businesses. Um, and we have no control and if anybody, the county should be doing a heavy push because that's their lottery. So I don't know how we're gonna get there, uh, if we're not willing to do um, a tough reinforcing. Or as the Vice Mayor said, uh, find a way to make these other cities accountable and 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 um, Commissioner Maritas alluded to as well, but until we get participation from everybody, we're just gonna be the, I don't want to use the word dumping ground. We're gonna be the place where these people gather and think that it's okay to be homeless on the streets of Fort Lauderdale.
So Commissioner, let me, and let me um, respond to that and and at this point, maybe I can give you a little bit of of an update on some of the things that I've been doing the last few weeks in connection with this. Um, I recently met with um, with the sheriff of Broward County and um, we talked about discharge proceedings from the county jail. He agreed with me that this has long been uh, uh, a source of homelessness on our streets. People are discharged out of jail at sometimes eleven o'clock at night, that no place to go. Uh, they're handed their bag of clothes and send them on, and there's a pat on the head and sent on their way. Um, not only is that inhumane to the individual, but it also is, um, it also is a source of of homelessness on our streets. They may have come from Pembroke Pines, they may have come from Coral Springs, but they end up in Fort Lauderdale, just like you say, Commissioner. So um, uh, he's agreed to convene a meeting in which we will uh, figure out how we're going to adjust the discharge proceeding so that if uh, that people aren't just let go on the streets of Fort Lauderdale once they're discharged from the jail, that they are in fact either uh, found housing right then and there, or they're sent back to the city from which they were originally arrested or cited that brought them to jail to begin with. So that then um, uh, made me realize that we need buy-in from the other cities. Now, we've attempted this multiple times. When I was on the C O C with the county, um, the subject come up, came up continually. Um, nothing was ever done. Um, Fort Lauderdale has always left holding the bag. And um, so I I've made a decision, I was, I hadn't really had a chance to talk with Commissioner Maritas, but I'm going to try to get on the agenda for one of the Broward League of Cities meetings and and bring this up and see, you know, how we're going to be able to create a, a, a program where we're going to get buy-in and and financial contribution from these other cities. Um, and um, and that, and that's another thing. And finally, um, I also met with AIDS Healthcare Foundation. AIDS Healthcare Foundation has uh, has pretty much moved on from that building they wanted to build uh, uh, in the downtown. And they have been speaking with us about another model that they have, uh, they have done in other cities where they buy hotels and that, and that they work with the local municipality to outfit them for um, uh, permanent and transitional housing for people who are homeless or just um, just formerly homeless, who need a place to live, who need inexpensive housing. And we were able to provide um, uh, case management as well as providing food and so forth. And uh, so I I met with them as recently as Sunday, uh, which they are eager to participate in this on their own dime and uh, and work with our community to try to relieve the uh, the level of of homelessness that's now existing on our streets. So I sense your frustration, but I just want you to know that we have been working um, behind the scenes to try to get some of this moving forward. And uh, I just want you to be aware of some of the activities that I've been doing.
I I have one more, one more scenario.
Sure.
And it's because of what people print and what people say about Fort Lauderdale, we have done some heavy lifting here. And the problem remains the same. For example, I have one, this is one story. Ninth Avenue and Sistrunk, if I have a complaint for two years straight about this one um, person. Um, and when you look at him, you feel all kind of sympathy and sorrow and you want to help. But the further and further I dug into his story. But the further and further I dug into his story, a couple of years ago, our police department, R-C-R-A, all the resources we have, county, Henderson, this young man was given help, cleaned up, housed, given every opportunity. He chose to go right back to the streets because that's where he wants to be. And now we have a fixture sitting at a bus bench that smells like manure, looks like manure, and bus riders, residents, can't sit at a bus bench and catch a bus to work. They're standing 10 yards away so that they can hail a bus to move forward, but there's nothing we can do. So as long as we have these type of scenarios where we can't do anything or we don't do anything, this problem is gonna exist until we do something different. I know we just can't go out and drop a net, but we have to do a little more than give United Way three quarters of a million dollars and expect this problem to go away. So I want to share that one story, but here's a guy, and I can tell you 10 more like it. They got every available assistance that this city and county can offer and has chosen to come right back to the streets because it's a better way for him there than in the system doing what others do day in and day out.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments regarding this?
Yep, Mayor.
Yes, Ben.
Yep, thanks. So just a couple of thoughts. One, I think Danielle and United Way are doing the right thing. I think there's a focus on rehousing, and I think the numbers are very good in terms of the efficacy. And I think, you know, part of the, and Mary bring up a good point about the funding gap in terms of utilization. And my, if I'm understanding it right, the reason for that gap, as I saw when I was talking to providers during COVID outbreak, is the amount of outreach and engagement and housing of folks basically stopped for a period of time as COVID initially started spreading. And so that actually led to a draw down, a decrease in funds spent on services and housing.
Okay.
That is correct.
The thing is, the thing is, Commissioner, it didn't stop us. As you know, the city manager undertook an emergency effort to try to house people, take them off the streets so they didn't contribute to the spread of the pandemic. And, you know, I just feel that when there is, when there is funding, everyone engaged in this effort should, you know, go out of their way to try to maximize the use of that funding. Just a little disappointed that United Way stepped back and did not do so. And, you know, COVID is no longer an excuse. We're not gonna, we're not gonna sit on our hands and say, woe is me, COVID has overtaken our lives. We can learn to coexist with COVID safely and keeping the public health's interest in mind. And going forward, I hope that we can continue to maintain safe practices, but we also have another issue, and that is working with those who are on the street who need a home, who need a hand up. And, you know, and I want to be able to partner with United Way, but I can see that we also need to engage with other partners because I just don't think that United Way gave us 100%. So, and we were left holding the bag this summer. So that's my feeling, so we can disagree, but anyway, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Okay. Then I'd also, the municipalities, just, it's something that, I'm on the COC, the county's continuum of care boards, that's where we work with on homelessness. And Mayor, that sounds like a great idea in terms of you addressing the League of Cities, and I'm working with county staff to engage with municipalities and seeking financial support for them to support homelessness in their communities and so forth. So that's, that's an ongoing effort. Unfortunately, it takes time, and COVID had a, generally a negative budgetary impact to a lot of cities. But, you know, I think we've got interest building in more and more cities, and we're gonna keep going it in that direction. And then Mayor, if you keep attacking it at your level, I think we can, we can get some wins.
So, but I just want you to know, Ben, in the best of times, we heard crickets from the other cities. That's the problem. So I just don't, you and I both know that oftentimes COVID is used as an excuse for inaction, and certainly our city is not gonna be blamed for any of that.
Yeah, I don't know any other solution other than just engagement, just engage.
Going up to their face.
Exactly. Just engage, attack, attack, attack. And, you know, I think from other commissioners too, you know, if you can reach out to other municipal elected officials that, and we can even do this, you know, every conference meeting, we can just say, all right, who's reached out to who and who's said what? That'd be helpful. Just reach out to your friends who are elected officials and ask them to support.
I agree.
One last question real quick. Just moving forward, I do support the work of the United Way, and I appreciate you all in the community. Is this a budgeted item, our 750 that we're going to move forward with for next year? Or does this fall into the you have to apply bucket?
It would come from the nonprofit funding, so it would be the applied for funding.
Has United Way applied for the 750?
I know we've received 109.
Okay.
I think I heard applications.
Do you know, Danielle?
Yes. We do have fiscal year 2021 funding from the city of Fort Lauderdale in the amount of $710,000 to specifically address the encampment at Stranahan Park for this fiscal year. And for fiscal year 22, that applies to the application, yes, we did apply to continue the work based on the scope of work that would be agreed upon with the city of Fort Lauderdale.
Okay, so one thing I'm a little bit confused about, I did see who you provided money to, and I support all those groups as well, but then those groups themselves may apply for funding from us. So I guess we have to see who gets the funding from where.
This year is that the Budget Advisory Board has been engaged, very engaged.
Right.
They will have their first meeting tomorrow where they talk about the 109 applications they got, and then they're gonna have another meeting on the 24th of the month. And then they'll make a recommendation as we start to prepare our budget. So we're gonna have not only our staff looking at those applications this year, but one of our advisory boards.
Okay, thank you. And I do, I know we all support the work you do for our homeless community, and I know it's a top priority for all of us. So I'm sure you'll get some sort of funding, and I hope it's the same, but just, and then I guess you will let us know the pass-through agencies that you will also be funding at the time, because I don't, I support a lot of those groups as well. I do want to make sure they're getting some funding, so I just need to see kind of how it's lining up. And thank you. And I do think Affordable Housing Trust Fund from the county, we can ask all we want, no one's gonna give us money. We need to just.
Well, there is some discussion at the county level, just to let you know, I've been made privy to, there is an initiative by Commissioner Dale Holness to see if they can dedicate a certain amount of millage rate, a .2, towards affordable housing as well as homeless housing. So there is an effort going.
Good, well, I hope that moves forward.
Yeah. Okay, anything else? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I also want to just recognize that Maria Henderson is attending the meeting. She's, she was attending, we moved her over to being a panelist. Maria, do you have anything that you would want to add to this presentation before we move on?
Yes, sure, and thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to share with you our work in the community with your support. There's two things that I do want to clarify that were discussed in this conversation. Number one was that when COVID-19 came to our community, they respite programs were closed. At that time, we did reach out to the city of Fort Lauderdale, and we did ask for the dollars to be reallocated, and we didn't get the approval. So that's how come the dollars were never used, because they were not approved to be used for something different than the respite initial allocation. So I wanted to clarify that and have that on record. The second part that I want to clarify is that we are only serving individuals, homeless individuals that are found in the city of Fort Lauderdale. We are not serving any individuals, we do dollars are coming from another city that we can prove that they came from another city. Is that we're only serving those that are, serving those that are in the city of Fort Lauderdale.
Wait, 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 Maria, wait, wait, wait. What is, wait a minute. You're only serving people in Fort Lauderdale but not from other cities? I hear you, it's hard to hear you because the microphone is not, the speaker is not clear.
Yeah, sorry. Correct, we do dollars. So when we approach a homeless person, we ask them, we do, we have an interview that we use, and we ask them, you know, where they slept in the last, you know, five days. And there's a lot of question that we ask just to make sure that they were in the city of Fort Lauderdale or that they used to reside in the city of Fort Lauderdale before they became homeless. We do have other dollars.
If they end up homeless on the streets of Fort Lauderdale, but they came from another city, you just, you just don't deal with them?
No, we have other, other funding that we receive from private sector that we use to support private rehousing programs. But the little dollars are used for the city, as specified in our contract with the city of Fort Lauderdale.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Danielle, thank you, Maria, we appreciate you being part of today's presentation. Moving on to business two, preliminary schematic design for the new Fort Lauderdale Police Headquarters. Who will be making that presentation?
We have, I guess I'll look to.
Hey Mayor, excuse me a second.
Yes.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I don't mean to go back, but I just listened to a presentation, I listened to some input. What was our objective there?
What was our objective to this, business one?
The homeless thing, because I mean, we just all talked. What was our, what was our takeaway? What were we supposed to come out of that with?
Well, I think it was just, as it says on the item, it says an overview, basically to hear from the United Way how they spent the money that we reimbursed them for in the last fiscal, fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, where are we now on this?
So I believe we've got Evan on. Evan, I saw you briefly. And Mike, who's gonna take the presentation for this next?
My name is Michael Kerwin, I'm a design principal at AECOM, and I'm ready to present with my colleague Danny Aguirre, who will run the technology, and I'll present the project.
That sounds great. The floor is yours.
Great, thank you so much. Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, and Commissioners and members of the public, we are here to present you the schematic design for the city of Fort Lauderdale Police Headquarters. And Danny Aguirre, my colleague, is just putting up on the screen the current design. I'm gonna start by, by just talking to you about the main parts and pieces of the, of the project, move forward to the site plan. As you all probably know, many of you all probably know, we're working on the site of the existing police headquarters for the city. And what we're doing is we're nestling in, in phases, the work of this project in order to keep the existing building going while we, while we design and develop and construct the new, the new facility. So we'll have a phase, we'll have a phase one in which we build the garage, we'll move all the cars into the garage, and that will empty a piece of site that's on the east side of the, of the site. Danny, if you can go forward to the, to the site plan. So the project's really a campus of three buildings. It's a, it's a structured parking garage on the south that you see there, on the southeast corner of the site. That will, that will get built first. That will allow us then to empty the site where you see the words Police Headquarters. That's the actual new headquarters that will get built while the existing police headquarters is still in, in operation. Then we'll move the police headquarters into the new facility and build the third phase, which is the block that you see on the northwest corner, which is the community center. And that really, Danny, you can go ahead, I know we only have five minutes, so you can move ahead into the, to the animation. That really brings the issue to the fore of what, of what we were asked to do with this project. We really asked to make an iconic building that represents the vibrant culture of Fort Lauderdale, but even more important than that, that expresses the linkages between the community and the police. And so we've actually developed three buildings. The building in the foreground there, if you could pause just one second, Danny, the building in the foreground there is the community, is a community building, and it's expressed as an individual building on the western side of the site. It sort of presents itself to Broward County, excuse me, to Broward Boulevard and the passersby along Broward Boulevard. It's a building that can be used for a variety of community functions. The larger building to the left in this image, which is to the east, is the headquarters itself, a very unique, highly, highly advanced, state-of-the-art police headquarters, pretty much unlike any other one that you'll, that you'll ever see. And then the really unique piece in between, we call the bridge, that's just behind the tree there, Danny, if you could show right there, that bridge is the actual front door to the building. And we, metaphorically, it's the bridge between the community, as represented by the community building, and the headquarters itself. That bridge element can be entered from Broward Boulevard on the north, and it can also be entered via a plaza that you see developed there just to the south of the community center. You'll see up close images of that in just one moment. So, so that bridge element attracts, attracts entrances or creates entrances from both sides. Anyone that's doing police building is likely to use that parking lot that you see on the right, but anybody that's coming on foot from, from a bus stop that's a little bit to the, off to the west of this image can also approach the building from Broward Boulevard. So that, that sort of iconic local architecture here is a really critical issue for us. We wanna, we want to convey to everyone that this is an open and inviting building while it's at the same time very secure and very operationally focused. It's, it's an extremely efficient building. It, on this, as far as the site is concerned, we're retaining, we're only using less than half the site to develop this brand-new building, that a little bit more than half of the site remains for future development in whatever form that might be necessary. We're also taking a whole series of existing leaseholds around the city and bringing them together into this building, both for the purpose of saving, saving those, saving the money associated with that, but also make this an efficient and operationally intelligent building. We're also working hard, if you could stop for just a second, Danny, we're working hard to fit this building into this unique community. It's a historic community, sailboat bend, it's a residential community. We're keeping the building as low as, as we can, as you can see on the right-hand side of the building, we're stepping the building deeply back from the, from the neighboring, neighboring residences on the other side of 12th Avenue. We're maintaining some really wonderful, mature shade trees all along the south and east edge of the site. Every, every single tree that can be maintained will be, and in fact, where they are positioned is a great green buffer to the, to the community. We've, we're gonna improve and connect pedestrian linkages around the edges of the site to, to link this building to its, to its, to its setting. And we're really trying hard to create a building that, that is, that is designed around its operational characteristics, all the needs that it has as a, as a functioning, state-of-the-art police headquarters, but something that also feels memorable, feels that it fits in in scale to the, to the community that's in, and also makes a statement along Broward Boulevard. The building will be resilient and sustainable, raising the building three and a half feet to keep it up out of flood, out of the flood plain. It will be self-sustaining during windstorms. We're gonna use every passive solar strategy that we can to create a building that shades itself. You'll see the, the elements on, especially on the upper part of the three-level headquarters building, blades and, and vertical elements that will help shade the building, but they're also, they're also a wonderful expression of a waveform. As you see the building, as you move around the building, they come together to form a sort of an expression of a wave. What you're doing, if you can stop right there, Danny, what you're seeing here is what you see as you approach the building on a daily basis as a police visitor. The, at the center there is the, is the south side of the bridge that I mentioned before. On the left, again, is the, is the expressed community building, and in the background there, that three-story building is the main, is the main headquarters. We're gonna provide, this is gonna be creating an advanced workplace for the police. It's gonna, it's gonna really be an expression of our respect for the people that work in, in this building, a real new step forward for the work that they do. And by supporting the work they do with an up-to-date and state-of-the-art facility, it will improve relationships between the community and the police and the police operations themselves. We're gonna continue to do community outreach. We have engaged Adams Consulting as a part. We're going to continue to do community outreach. We have engaged Adams, Adams Consulting as a part of the team. So as we move forward, we're very early in the design process, but as we move forward, we're going to continue to reach out to the community for input. If you stop right there, Danny, that is the, again, as I mentioned before, that is the approach from Broward Boulevard. That's that bridging element. There's a tree right there in the center that is a, that is an existing tree, which is right at the northeast corner of the current police building. We're working pretty much the entire experience of approaching the building around that, around that particular tree. And all the other trees that you see in Danny's, in Danny's model and in this video are existing, existing mature shade trees, mostly oaks and mahogany's that we, that we would like to, that not we would like to, that we are going to preserve, that we have worked around in this, in this design. So one last thing, we're really showing you the exterior of the building. We won't have time to really walk through the plans with you, but one of the things I want to stress to you is that this is, this is a building that's designed fully from the inside out. Each of the three levels of the main headquarters building is designed around the functionality of that, of that level. And what that ends, what that ends up creating is three very different levels. And we're looking right now at the, at the second level, the middle level, where we've created a courtyard that ties the three buildings together. It's a, it's a court that goes right through the third level down through the second and, and to the first. But on that level, as Danny is showing you in this, in this video, there's a patio that runs right through the building. So there's an area for, there's a amenities area and exterior, but sun and rain protected area for the police officers and everybody works in this building to, to meet, to eat outdoors, to, to relax. And that, and that really ties the, ties the entire building together. And that, that area is visually protected and totally secure for the, for the police officers to work in the building. So this is the way the building looks right now. This is a, this is a rendering from the northwest. You're looking to the southeast. Again, the community building in the foreground, the, those vertical blades that I talked about really occur on, on both the community building and the garage and the main building. What we're really trying to do here is create a, a campus of buildings where each of the buildings is, is developed around the same material palette. We're not, we don't want to do a pretty building and an ugly garage. We really want to make this a consistent, a consistent expression of materials and of, and of, you know, sort of exterior expression to the community. So that's where we are right now. We're moving, we'll be moving by, by the middle of the month, we'll be moving into design development. We're on schedule. We're working within budget. We're obliged to continue work within budget. And we look forward to showing it to you again, hearing your comments, of course, right now and showing it to you, to you guys again in the near future as it develops.
All right, great. Any questions? Okay, very good. I do have some questions that I'd like to ask you, but we can do it outside the meeting. Just, just some personal questions I wanted to ask. I don't want to take up the time right now, but maybe we can talk after the meeting.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt, but it's a little difficult with the phone and trying to catch up. I just wanted to say congratulations. I think you guys did, I think you hit it out of the park on this. I, I love the architecture. I love the building. I don't know if you're aware of it, but I think you're actually paying homage to Bill Biggini's original design for the structure, the, the international style of it. But yet you've given it a modern, a modern twist and you've, the articulation and the movement and the separation and the spaces. I just think you did a great job and I just wanted to say thank you. I, I think it's going to look spectacular.
Thank you very much. We appreciate those comments and we are, we are, we are familiar with the history of the existing building and, and, and we did have it in mind to, to pay a little bit of homage here and there to it. So, thank you.
Well, I think you did more than just a little bit here and there. And I just, again, I wanted to say, I wanted to say thank you. I think it's very impressive and I think, I think it's going to look terrific. Thank you. That's it, Mayor.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much and we'll stay in touch. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
Okay, as we move on to business three, Los Olas Mobility Update. We have quite a few people who have signed up to speak, so I hope we can keep it to like two or three minutes per person. I know there are a couple of neighborhood association representatives that wanted five minutes, so let's just see how we're doing. See how we're doing in time. Okay, so.
Would you like us to make, we're prepared to make a brief presentation before taking the public?
I think that would make a lot of sense.
Okay, so let's, let's start with Ben Rogers and then we'll move to Joe Cordino. And then we've got a short video to play and then we'll be ready to move into comments and other questions. Ben, take it away.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioner. Ben Rogers, Transportation Mobility. About a year ago, February 4th, 2020, we came to commission to provide an update on this project. And we outlined four kind of focal areas for the project to balance the multimodal needs of the corridor, to improve and expand sidewalk conditions, to improve pedestrian safety, work on crosswalk sliding, ADA access and connectivity, and then also focus on landscaping, shade and infrastructure improvements. During that time, we also onboarded the Cordino Group as a, as a project consultant. And in their agreement, they had eight tasks that they had to complete. Were substantially complete with the majority of those tasks, ranging from data analytics, traffic feasibility analysis and public outreach. And so today we have Joe Cordino from the Cordino Group, who's going to give you a brief update of his efforts, the background of the project, and then we have a final recommendation video to share.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for, thanks for having me here today. It's, it's a pleasure to be here as we start to wrap up this project. What I want to talk about today is what we're going to do in this presentation. I'm going to little, talk about, a little bit with Ben, just talk about what we were supposed to do. I'm going to talk about how we did it and then we're going to show you a video of our recommendations. And that video is intended to be really a 50,000 foot view of this project, so we don't get bogged down in too great a detail. And then what we'll be able to do is, is answer your questions in as great a detail as, as possible. Aside from all of the details that we were working through on this project, we were going to develop a world-class streetscape project for Los Olas Boulevard. We were going to do this using the highest quality of urban design, a detailed understanding of traffic flow and mobility. And then we were going to combine that with extensive public engagement along the corridor, really the art and science of urban planning, if you will. Informed by data, analysis, design, combined with public opinion. Ultimately, the goal here is to have a superior design that not only enhance the character and quality of life for the people who use the corridor, but it's ultimately very competitive with other high profile streets you see, not only in this county, but this region and the state of Florida. So our approach to doing it, again, data intensive, traffic analysis, engineering, so we knew where the cars were, where the people were, the bicycle were, bicycles were, and where they're going to be in the future. We use high quality of land surveying tools, so we knew the parameters of the space we had to deal with. And then all of our final designs that you'll see in any one of these projects meet all applicable engineering and planning standards. So when we talk about whether it's Broward County standards, FDOT or national standards, Americans with Disabilities Act, everything, lane widths, median location, traffic calming, everything here is technically sufficient. And then, of course, we must do public engagement because that's the heart of a project like this. And remember, this is a long quarter with many distinct sections, as you're about to see. Our base group for the public engagement was the working group and two of the elected officials were on the working group. We were initially scoped to do public engagement of three working group meetings, a handful of workshops. That was impossible to do. We, we went well over and above that. We had close to three or four times the amount of meetings in the end as we got to it. Everything from telephone calls, working groups, workshops, calls, walking tours. Even during COVID, we're walking towards group meetings with individuals, homeowners associations. Basically anytime anybody wanted to talk, we could picked up the phone. I gave my cell phone out on numerous occasions and again, anybody who wanted to talk, we picked up the phone. Anytime somebody had a question, those questions were fully explored, fully vetted, and then the answers were ultimately given. So that public engagement began December of 2019. And during that time, as we were doing the public engagement, we had our team of expert designers working on the conceptual design for the project. As we got into the summertime last year, we started to blend the, the initial design with those comments from public engagement and changed it again. By September, we were ready to present our initial take at this project. And ever since September, we've been holding working group meetings to refine that initial design. Again, marrying high quality design with consensus because we knew we would come here to you guys, the elected officials. And look, I understand your job. It's, it's very difficult. And when we get into a situation like this on a 2.1 mile corridor, you know, what our goal was to try to do was to knock off any of the things, any of the real difficult problems so that you didn't have to deal with it. And I believe we've done that. It's likely that you're going to be hearing from a number of people within the community who just have absolutely opposite opinions. I think we've done that and we've got right together here a consensus plan. So we've listened, we've understood why people wanted to do what they wanted to do. And ultimately, we made our recommendations as a professional team. I'm going to talk to you first, again, we, we had our original plan in September and we've morphed it. It has changed multiple times over, you'll see what you, what you'll notice is lacking in this plan, some of the things we've changed. Curbless streets, a traffic circle, the redesign of Tarpin and Los Olas, an elevated bike path, waterside lookouts or docks, activated waterfront with kayaks, all those things we removed through the public involvement. Issues that we didn't necessarily have consensus on, I'll talk about today. I think we've been able to meet it in many cases. Bicycle lanes on Los Olas as a, as a pair, as compared to on parallel streets. I believe we've put them on, on Los Olas Boulevard because we were able not to take sidewalk space away, and I think that was acceptable. There is an issue in the downtown of a curvy street pattern versus a straight street pattern. We had consensus on that. We lost it at the end of the project. That's something now that, that you'll have to deal with. The issue, it isn't dire, however, because in either one of the alternatives that we have, we've accomplished a primary goal of capturing more than 200% of this, of pedestrian space back, 200% more pedestrian space in either one of the alternatives. We had a dual left turn intersection at 15th and Los Olas instead of a traffic circle. We are protecting the Coley Hammock neighborhood through traffic calming. We believe that's absolutely critical to this project because the quality of life in that neighborhood is key. And then, then we have to deal with the aisles. Despite many of the protestations, I believe that the aisles has gotten just about everything that they've requested through this project. We've got new strike triangles at the bridges. The median is to stay in the same place. Bicycle safety, pedestrian bicycle facilities on both sides of the road. We've minimized the activity of the areas on the waterfront. We've provided a high quality landscape design and the evacuation flow is not an issue here. So there are certain things that we absolutely just couldn't deal with in this type of project. And those are things that we'll make policy recommendations on. One, this was not a drainage study. We had no ability to get into details on sea level rise, climate change or any of those things. So we highly recommend that you do not put whatever you approve on the streets without a significant engineering design of the drainage facilities. Also, the emergency response times are deficient and we could not engineer that into compliance. So those things need to be fixed. So with that, Eddie will begin our presentation and then we're here to answer any of your questions in as great a detail as possible. Thank you all very much.
Dun, 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 dun. Finally. Eight years later.
Welcome to the Los Olas Boulevard Corridor Conceptual Design Presentation. We are excited to share with you the conceptual design vision for Los Olas Boulevard. Los Olas Boulevard is a vital link for multimodal traffic. It is both a strategic part of the roadway network as well as the most direct east-west route for people walking and cycling. Our project vision is to connect residents and visitors of Fort Lauderdale through the enhancements of this iconic boulevard representing our history and future. As a major thoroughfare connecting downtown Fort Lauderdale and Central Beach, Los Olas Boulevard must balance moving people efficiently through a variety of transportation needs, inclusive to pedestrian, bicycling, vehicular and transit modes, with space programmed to safely accommodate other alternative modes. Within the context of the network, Los Olas is the most direct route between downtown and the beach. The boulevard's centrality also places it within the reach of transit, first response and park facilities. The natural geography of the corridor also offers a number of opportunities for public art and gateway features at transitions, such as connecting Riverwalk via Tunneltop Plaza. Some general opportunities for enhancements were identified throughout the corridor, including improved comfort with shade trees, cohesive branding, connections to nearby destinations, uninterrupted bicycle facilities and wayfinding. Los Olas passes through five areas along the way, each with distinct urban character. These areas are downtown, the Shops District, Coley Hammock, the aisles and the beach. Each segment is different, but contributes to the continuous experience and visual identity of the street. Currently, bicycle route facilities are already present in Coley Hammock, the aisles and the beach. Downtown is growing and becoming a live, work and play destination. The Shops District is the premier downtown shopping area with art galleries and fine dining neighboring global brands and retail. The Coley Hammock neighborhood possesses a cohesive extension of shops with the presence of local eateries and services, while also representing one of the oldest communities in Fort Lauderdale. The aisles area has a close knit community with an active waterfront space where residents and visitors enjoy running, biking and having fun. The beach is a dynamic tourist oriented realm with endless trails, sand and sun lined with bars for beachgoers. The westernmost character area within the Los Olas corridor is downtown. As shown, downtown extends from South Andrews Avenue to the Tunneltop Plaza at US1. Downtown is generally pedestrian friendly with the presence of public spaces along the private right of way. Ample shade is provided by the tall buildings. There is a need for the bicycle facilities to connect to the emerging adjacent districts, including the Performing Arts and Government Center, as well as the Bright Line, Riverwalk and bike lanes in the nearby Coley Hammock to the east. Separation of traffic modes through protected bicycle facilities, flex lanes for curbside management and enhanced pedestrian crossings are the principal recommendations for downtown Los Olas. Enhanced pedestrian crossings at the intersections will improve the safety and comfort of the pedestrian experience in downtown. The gateway also provides an opportunity for public art. One-way cycle tracks on the north and south sides of Los Olas ensures people of all ages and abilities feel safe when getting around the downtown area on a bicycle. The bicycle tracks will allow for a smooth flow of eastbound and westbound multimodal traffic between South Andrews Boulevard and Southeast Second Avenue. Other general recommendations for downtown include improvements that enhance conditions for Americans with disabilities, floating bus stops along the two-way cycle track, wayfinding for accessing nearby facilities such as Riverwalk, the Performing Arts District and the Bright Line Station. Improved curbside management is recommended through the flex lanes on the north side of the boulevard. Sidewalks will retain their current widths or become wider and on street parking will not be added where it currently does not exist. A few spaces will be taken to extend the westbound turn on Third Avenue. The vehicular lanes can be reversed to go all east or westbound in the case of an emergency. Following the main business district of downtown Los Olas, we arrive at the Shops District, which extends from the Tunneltop Plaza at US1 to Southeast 12th Avenue. The Shops possess a pedestrian scale and an iconic green canopy that supports its role as a premier shopping strip. However, the narrow sidewalks can create pinch points where street furniture and landscaping are not well coordinated, especially since the area is popular for both locals and visitors alike. It also has organized parking lots behind storefronts that can be accessed through the pedestrian alleys between street blocks. The East Riverwalk Terminus is at the Tunneltop Plaza, which also serves as a water taxi stop and where the Shops District begins. This area is iconic today and will be iconic in the future. The environment will be redesigned to benefit the pedestrians by enhancing the landscaping, street furniture and outdoor dining with a shared street concept. We recommend the Shops District be improved with a curvy, curbed design to enhance the quality of the pedestrian realm in support of its businesses. Additional improvements include a new gateway plaza and raised Additional improvements include a new gateway plaza and raised intersections to remain in compliance with ADA standards. Our recommendations reassign space from the median and parallel parking to expand the sidewalk area, creating a 200% increase in walkable space. Parallel parking will be alternating on the north and south side, contributing to the curvy, curbed design. The expanded sidewalk area will be used to provide amenities and to complement the businesses located in this area. While 68 parking spaces will be reassigned to improve the pedestrian landscape, there is plenty of parking available in the lots behind storefronts, which are connected to the Boulevard via pedestrian walkways. A variety of trees and plant life will be added along the Shops area to provide shade and maintain an iconic, beautiful look. The designed spacing configuration will provide accommodations for pedestrians with seating areas, items that will add to our Boulevard's character such as public art, La Solis branding, water features, enhanced planting and wayfinding. Pedestrians will have plenty of space to move about and enjoy all that the Shops area has to offer. The Shops will feature a network of designated bike lanes and shared roadway options, which will be located directly on La Solis Boulevard as well as on parallel roadways to the north and south. This network will extend through Coley Hammock. Upon crossing Hermershi Canal Bridge, you will enter Coley Hammock, which extends from Southeast 12th Avenue to the Isle of Capri Drive. This segment has both a commercial area and residential area. Coley Hammock experiences challenges in providing enough pedestrian space to support shopping activities while also lacking shade trees. In its existing condition, bicycle lanes encroach on the door zone of parked cars and are interrupted at the 15th Avenue signalized intersection. Drivers that seek to avoid driving through downtown use Broward Boulevard to the north via Southeast 15th Avenue. Visitors can also access the area via water taxi stop at Coley Hammock Park. As a transition between the suburban, car oriented aisles and the pedestrian oriented downtown area of Fort Lauderdale, Coley Hammock must provide design cues to change travel behavior to support a pedestrian friendly environment for businesses. Coley Hammock will be redesigned to expand areas for walking and gathering while incorporating separated bicycle facilities. Coley Hammock will be improved with sidewalk level, one-way cycle tracks, as well as expanded sidewalks and street trees along storefronts. By reducing the number of vehicular lanes through Coley Hammock, space can be created for pedestrians, bicyclists and shade trees. This redesign will also provide shorter crossings and the opportunity to include business amenities. To improve traffic while also maintaining neighborhood integrity, intersection updates such as a double left turn on 15th Avenue have been proposed with a recommendation to coordinate with improvements at Broward and 15th Avenue. To create a safe environment for pedestrians and bicyclists, sidewalks will be expanded and bicycle lanes will be added on the new Sospiro Bridge between East Coley Hammock and the aisles. Due to the age of the bridge, a full replacement is recommended as the best path to maintaining the existing layout of the road while expanding sidewalks and cycle tracks. For pedestrians and cyclists traveling east or westbound along La Solis, the green space adjacent to the bridge will offer an opportunity to rest and relax by the waterfront. La Solis in the aisles possesses a pleasant waterfront experience and is frequently used by joggers and cyclists. This area serves as a direct route for traffic between downtown Fort Lauderdale and Fort Lauderdale Beach and is the longest segment of La Solis Boulevard. The curbside bike lanes in the aisles can be stressful to navigate alongside 40 miles per hour traffic. In addition, the lack of north to south crosswalks, including at bus stops, is a subject of concern among residents. There are also opportunities for green areas along the waterfront at the transitions to other character areas and at Southeast 23rd Avenue. The aisles will be redesigned with designated bicycle facilities, plentiful shade, landscaped areas and new crossings between the north and south sides of La Solis Boulevard. New crossing locations and site triangle extensions will be coordinated with rest areas and bus stop improvements to provide a direct and convenient bicyclist and walking experience. Separated bicycle paths on both sides of the road, improved lighting and new crossings will enhance safety in the aisles. Bicycle paths on both sides of La Solis also ensure that the existing layout of the roadway is maintained, retaining the median with two vehicular lanes in each direction. Traffic calming and safety measures such as reduction in the width of traffic lanes and the addition of plant life and other visual cues will be introduced to moderate driving speed. Sidewalk widths are maintained or expanded in addition to the added improvements. A five to seven foot planting strip or median is proposed between Sunset Drive and Point Sienna Drive. Private property and parking will not be affected. Variances in the landscaping configuration in the aisles will allow for all facilities to coexist seamlessly. Shade trees and a concept for the East Isles underpass, as well as improvements to the existing signalized intersection at Riviera Isle Drive are recommended. Zero escaping and landscaping improvements are proposed to the green space east of the aisles on the northwest corner of the intracoastal waterway. This would double as a waterfront rest area as well as an opportunity to incorporate a pedestrian crossing facility under the drawbridge. Parallel parking would be relocated to the side streets to facilitate these recommended improvements. The beach is the eastern terminus of the La Solis Corridor terminating at State Road A1A. It is an area for strolling or exercising along the oceanfront. Crossing this area is difficult for bicyclists because the curb lane is shared with motor vehicles. A cantilever expansion of a multi-use path on the north side of the intracoastal waterway drawbridge is recommended to provide space for both bicyclists and pedestrians to cross safely. This multi-use path should be coordinated to reach destinations such as the new La Solis Beach Park and Parking Garage, as well as the Route A1A Bike Lanes. Bike parking, improvements to signalized intersections and bridge improvements should be incorporated throughout the La Solis Corridor to enhance its status as a world-class, multimodal corridor. La Solis Boulevard will be a live, work and play destination for South Florida. This project will provide conditions for a diverse downtown. Special shops, chic Coley Hammock, idyllic aisles and our blissful beach. These images show how we envision La Solis Boulevard after improvements take place. A family friendly downtown, vibrant shops, town center Coley Hammock, aisles with waterfront views and a connection to trails on the beach. La Solis will become a destination to serve residents and visitors alike, an active, unique, world-class, live, work and play street, Fort Lauderdale's signature street.
All right, great. So sir, we're, we're here for any, anything you need of us, questions, public comment, whichever, we're, we'll be here.
Okay, great. So we'll begin the public comment section. Before we begin public comment, anyone on the commission want to respond to anything that they just already want to wait till the folks have had a chance to speak?
Man, I'd just like to say one thing.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I, I just want to thank, you know, Vice Mayor and it's, and everyone who's participated in any part of this. It's been quite an effort and collaboration and I'm proud of all the work we've done. And I want to thank Joe Cordino and Eddie have been fantastic partners in this work and, Mayor, they've really worked so hard. I mean, they've really put in weekends and extra time and so forth to really try to hear the residents and try to understand what's the best fit for, you know, what I think is our crown jewel of our city from a Boulevard and throughway. So I just, I'm just really appreciative of everyone that's, that's been part of this and look forward to continuing the conversation. Thanks, Mayor.
You're welcome. I think we all echo the sentiments of the Commissioner and thank you so much for the.
You're welcome. Thank you.
But don't go away.
I'm not.
Your daughter is photobombing you, Commissioner Sorenson, just watching. Oh, there she is. Okay. All right. All right. So let us begin. We have a group that has asked to speak in a certain order, so I'm going to respect that request. It starts with Tom Goddard, Neil Kaelis, David Maya, Tom Ferrington, Ben Walker, Brad Tuckman, Mark Schwartz and John Evans. I'll call you up in that order. I assume most of you are going to be here on Zoom. If not, please let me know if you're in the, in the chambers. So please try to keep it to two or three minutes, folks, because we do have quite a few people who want to speak. So Tom, are you, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you loud and clear.
Great. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask, have maybe up to five minutes just because I'm speaking for the whole association.
Okay, we'll start. We'll see where it takes you.
You got it. Okay. So I have never participated in a process that involves so much input from the general public over, I guess, an approximately two-year period. I want to thank the Cordino Group for their professionalism, patience and for listening to so many voices. As a resident of La Solis Isles for over 36 years and as a person that created and paid for with the assistance of Mark Schwartz, Patrick McTeague and PNC Bank, a plan called the La Solis Beautification Plan, I have been advocating for the creation of a streetscape plan that meets the mission statement of the La Solis Mobility Plan, connecting residents and visitors of Fort Lauderdale through the enhancement of this iconic corridor representing our history and future. La Solis Boulevard is our city's iconic thoroughfare. For residents and visitors alike, it connects our modern and vibrant downtown with our beloved beaches. It represents our history and it represents our future. Cordino Group came back to the group with some bold ideas that have now been scaled back due to the comments from a group of, from a group of residents. They said, no one was listening to them, but with due respect, nearly all their issues have been addressed. And what is now being recommended is a much more diluted option, given what was originally presented. La Solis Boulevard belongs to all the residents of Fort Lauderdale, not just a select few that have been relentlessly and aggressively trying to undermine every proposed improvement. All our residents should be able to share in this picturesque beauty of our unique neighborhood. We should be able to feel comfortable biking, running, walking and pushing a baby carriage. The entire city deserves to enjoy the view vistas by utilizing seating areas and enjoying our scenery. When we first started this process, I had my own plan that I was pushing. The city decided to hire outside consultants at a considerable expense to provide expertise through an unbiased process. If we were not going to listen to the advice of the traffic engineers and the Cordino Group, we should never have begun this process. There's one thing I need to address. There's a difference in giving input and hijacking the entire plan. And the other residents that have come to support this, this very few were presented with a very biased narrative from that group and were not presented with all the facts. The overall plan was started by a committee of which I was a member that had stakeholders from all five distinct areas along this 2.1 mile corridor. For the most part, we have all reached a consensus on the whole project, which was not an easy feat considering the issues, including parking, traffic, streetscape, curb management and mobility for pedestrians, bicyclists and vehicles. On a personal note, with regard to 16th Avenue, I, as a resident of the aisles, would love to utilize that street because it's a very convenient alternative to 15th Avenue. That said, is it really fair that I impede on another neighborhood by utilizing that street as a cut through when I could just as easily use other options? I am in support of closing the street to northbound traffic and protecting that neighborhood, especially due to the conclusion from the consultants that 15th Avenue, once improved, can handle the traffic. Looking forward, the city will need to tackle the engineering and infrastructure aspects of this project as well as other refinements such as what species of trees should be utilized on that corridor and in the medians. Let's not be blind to the fact that there are other choices of palms that can be utilized in the medians of the aisles that would look far more substantial than the royal palms that look like telephone poles with green on top. There are beautiful palm trees out there and we need to find them and put them on our street. It is important to say that no one person or group can get exactly what they want out of this project. We need to find a compromise to make our neighborhood and city better. I would like to thank the Cordino Group, all the members of our committee, Commissioners Glassman and Sorenson for their patience and for helping us make this plan a reality. I look forward to the next phase.
Great. Thank you so much. Neil Kaelis, followed by David, David Maya. Neil, are you there? Is Mr. Kaelis there?
He's there for everybody. Just star six to unmute, star six. Thank you.
Am I unmuted now?
You are, you're good. Good to go.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission. By the way, Mayor, I'm, I'm thinking that the song you were trying to allude to earlier was actually the song of the vulgar boatman.
Okay.
Look it up, listen to it. So I'm a relatively new resident, resident to the aisles. My wife and I moved here about seven years ago and we moved here because we loved downtown Fort Lauderdale. We grew up in Florida, in Broward County, and Fort Lauderdale was always a destination for us. A do-nothing option to our way of thinking is not feasible and not realistic. Those of us that walk, ride, bike or jog along La Solis know that in its current state, it is a hodgepodge of poorly maintained and dissimilar themed sign, street signage, traffic signals, overhead utilities, landscaping, sidewalks, street lighting and hardscape amenities, all of which lack a uniform and coordinated theme. La Solis is a Boulevard. It's not an avenue. It's not a street. It's not a court. It's not a drive. As a Boulevard, it was and should be a gateway, a grand iconic gateway from the downtown to the beach and from the beach to the downtown. The scale and quality of the proposed landscaping, lighting, signage and other improvements should pay, I'm sorry, portray the visual image of a grand iconic Boulevard. La Solis Boulevard, not cluttered or understated, but iconic. For traffic calming, I would suggest that the consultants consider that none of the travel lanes be greater than 10 feet. I noticed on the plan, there were some that were 11. There might be a reason for it, but as part of a traffic calming, I know from previous involvement in a community redevelopment agency that the traffic engineers recommended narrower travel roads. So I, I endorse that and I think that that would provide even more room for sidewalks and landscape areas and bike paths. In closing, I'd just like to say that I think the Court, Cordino Group did a marvelous job and we endorse. Group did a marvelous job, and we endorse that plan. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. David Maya, followed by Tom Tharrington. Is David there?
Yeah, hi. This is David Maya.
Good afternoon.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. Tom and I both serve on the La Solas Isles Homeowners Association. Tom covered most of the things. I just wanted to go into very few brief, specific items that were raised that were of concern to many of the residents on the South Side. First of all, we understand that this is a preliminary attempt at drawing everything and planning everything. And so we believe and we hope that there will be ample opportunity in the future as the engineering to this project gets underway to revisit some of the things that we think are possible now, but may not be possible or may look different in the future. So we hope and expect that that will be the case, that as this plan goes forward, there'll be an opportunity when the engineering happens that we can revisit some of the things, just in case they're not feasible. Number two was, and this is probably the most important thing to all of the residents I've spoken to, is that none of this should take place without the appropriate attention being given to the infrastructure requirements of the area. We can't plan for turns on 15th without getting rid of the flooding problems on 15th on any heavy rain day. Another issue that was raised by a lot of the residents of the area was also mentioned by Neil, it's the high-speed traffic. Either we do it by means of enforcement, or we do it by means of engineering, but the speed of vehicles passing through the Isles specifically in the morning is pretty dangerous to the residents of that area. I'm not sure how much the Cordino Group addressed this specific item, but if you live along the Isles, either on the north or the south, and you're coming out of the Isles to make a left turn, the space in that median, which is that 12-foot width, gives you a place to sort of dart into the middle before you cross into the next section. But I still don't feel that the current design is safe in terms of cars being able to make that turn. I would just want special attention paid to that specific aspect in the engineering phase, that we redesign the medians to allow for a safe merging into traffic when you're coming out of either side. I know that I struggle with it sometimes, and I know that just about everybody does when they try to make a left turn coming out of either side.
Okay, David, David, we have to conclude our remarks. That was three minutes.
No problem. And then EMS is the other thing that's very important to everybody. The EMS times are terrible right now.
All right. Thanks. Thank you so much. Tom Tharrington, followed by Ben Walker, followed by Brad Tuck.
Thank you very much. I, I think David, Neil, and Tom did a, did a good job of expressing what I think is important to this project, and I think it's really well done to date. I, one thing I just wanted to add, I'm 20 years off La Solas on Royal Plaza Drive, and I think you're going to bury me here. I, I love it, right? And I know it's something special, not only those that live here, but for the rest of the city. The one thing I just, that I, that I, I felt 20 years ago when I bought the property, and that I continue to feel, is safety as I walk to dinner, walk to the beach, jog to the beach, or ride my bike. So if, if I can emphasize that to the, to the Cordino Group, if there's any way you can slow that traffic, you know, I speak with the officers that are out there from time to time, and, you know, they just shake their head because they can sit out there and make their quota, so to speak, right, with all the speeding traffic, and it's flat out dangerous. And it would just be nice to have, to slow that down. So whether it's narrowing the road, which Neil alluded to, or whatever we could do to do that would, would be healthy. Thanks.
All right, great. Thank you so much. Ben Walker, followed by Brad Tuck. Ben, are you there? Ben Walker? He and Tom are neighbors on Royal Plaza.
Do not see the name.
Nope. Okay. We'll move on. Brad Tuckman, followed by Mark Schwartz, followed by John Evans.
Hey, guys. This is Brad. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, we can. Sure. Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for having me. You know, I really want to focus today on safety. I live on Mola, which accesses La Solas through Capri, La Capri. And, you know, we obviously have the bridge right there, which was called Suspirro. And, you know, as it is today, it's, I want to say it's three feet at best width, and cars, the speeding is, as you guys know, very bad. We actually will not allow our kids on that bridge even to walk. At times, people are riding on the bridge with their bicycles, leaving you nowhere to go. We've almost been hit by cars. We had a friend that was actually clipped a little bit by a wing, by a rearview mirror or sideview mirror. Same time, you know, just getting on La Solas with the speeding is dangerous as it is. We often have to make a right turn, head east, and then make a U-turn. And to add to that, the sidewalks going east are very narrow on the South Side. Between the speeding, the narrow nature there and whatnot, we actually don't even let our kids go east on the sidewalk either. We've almost been hit on turns there as well. So, you know, obviously, my focus is primarily on the safety of La Solas. Obviously, the widening of the pass is great, the narrowing of the roads, the windingness, all of that would be great. The beautification, I assume, will just come with it as well. But again, from a, from a parent whose kids are annoyed with me on a regular basis now, because they can't see their friends easily, you know, that shouldn't be the case. It's just between the speed and the narrowness. So if you guys, you know, the plans as it is looks great. I think you guys are making progress, and I just want to thank everybody for their effort and, you know, hope we can get this through.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Mark Schwartz, followed by John Evans. Is Mark there?
Hi, hi, Mayor. Thank you. Actually met you. I haven't had to speak to you in about 16 years. You, you did a closing for a house I sold for the buyer. So nice to talk to you again after 16.
It was a good experience for you.
I, I've been on the Isles about 18 years. I'm the treasurer presently for La Solas Isles, and I support, you know, just the change. You can't just sit idle, like many say. I think it's nice that you all seek our input. I, I even stepped up and helped contribute to something to, to kind of spearheaded a few years back with no intentions in mind. I'm not a developer or anything like that. So I just want to see, you know, progress. Change is inevitable. So in the end of the day, what you have to remember is the fact that you represent us. We have the confidence in you when you seek the proper people, whether it's Cordino or whomever. And you do not even have to get our approval. So the sheer fact that you get a lot of naysayers out there that don't want to do anything, in the end, just do what you think is right, because you don't really need our approval anyway. So just do it. We think you'll have our best interests in mind. You're seeking our input. You're getting it from enough people. And, and just do it, rather than just trying to appease everyone, because you can't. So I just want to give you the support that you need in your decision process, and that's the only reason I wanted to speak.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
John Evans, are you there? John Evans?
Do not see that name.
Nope.
Okay. John, if you come back, just let us know. Okay, we'll continue with the names. Mary Fertig, followed by Cliff Sadekow, followed by James Carlson. Is, Mary, are you there?
Thank you, Mayor Tantallas. I am here today to speak on behalf of my neighborhood association, the Idlewild Improvement Association. Our neighborhood was founded over 100 years ago, and our association was incorporated in 1946. I've been a member of the La Solas Mobility Working Group since it was formed in 2018. My neighborhood has worked with other neighborhoods in our region to address mobility and safety issues since 2012. We've seen many consultants bring forward plans, but the major issues of our region remain unresolved. It was our hope that the Cordino Group would succeed where others did not. Unfortunately, their final recommendations are not what we expected after the extensive effort to provide input by residents in our community. Our concerns to, since 2012 have remained focused on a few key issues: replacing aging and failing infrastructure, addressing sea level rise, which causes extensive flooding of our roads, traffic congestion, bike and pedestrian safety, better EMS times. The La Solas Isles are among the worst in the city, and our most recent time in the fall was 10 minutes and 30 seconds response time, safe evacuation routes, and crosswalks. The initial plan presented in August was very alarming to us, curvy roads and the shops around about at Southeast 15th, an elevated path down La Solas was one of three proposals, parks in the Isles created by filling in canals, narrowing the Isles to two lanes, inconsistent bike paths, and so forth. Prior to being presented with the plans, our neighborhoods had facilitated at least six meetings with the Cordino Group. And when I say our neighborhoods, I'm not just speaking about Idlewild, but I'm talking about all of the homeowners associations in the Isles, with the exception of maybe one. In an effort to move forward the plan in a positive direction, Idlewild joined several other area associations to work together to draft a plan. This was really a way of incorporating our ideas and presenting them to the consultant. After presenting the Cordino proposal and alternative four at the side-by-side all of, three of their proposals, and the alternative four at the September Idlewild Improvement Association meeting, the members voted unanimously to support alternative four. We then forwarded that to the Cordino Group. At our January meeting, alternative four was amended to include opposing the closing of northbound Southeast 16th Avenue, which was prevent, which was presented just really a few weeks before that. We were surprised in the final presentation of February 11th to see the curvy roads in the shops area, as we had thought that an option four articulated by Charlie Ladd was supported by the majority of the working group. Additionally, we were very dismayed that alternative four in the Isles was not adopted, and encouraged the Commission to support incorporating alternative four, which you will have, which you have a copy of when you move this plan forward. Alternative four supports the prioritization of addressing infrastructure, sea level rise, and EMS times, supports open space, crosswalks, rehabilitation of the existing sidewalks, painting, restriping of the bike lanes, a dual left turn at Southeast 15, or the study of other options. It supports maintaining the current median at its, at its current width with no reduction in its current size between the Suspirro Bridge and Sunset Drive. It supports rebuilding of the Suspirro Bridge, the replacement of trees previously removed by the city. It opposes the narrowing of La Solas east of Southeast 15th Avenue, the closure of 16th Avenue. It opposes a roundabout at Southeast 15th Avenue and the creation of multiple parks and viewing areas within a few blocks on the north side of La Solas. Any further removal of native trees in our area to be replaced with exotic trees is something that we oppose, and the hard permanent narrowing of any section of La Solas, we were hoping for flexibility. At two meetings ago, just before the final meeting, the Cordino Group added a new feature to this plan. It's a, it's a median between Sunset Drive, which for those of you that drive down La Solas, is by the gas station, to the entrance of Idlewild. This would create ingress egress issues for homes that were platted in the 1930s. It's kind of neat looking at the old plat. You see Ivy Stranahan's signature as a representative of the city's planning board. With all of this, we, we also want to say that we do not want to see mangroves removed, nor do we want our, any parts of our canals filled in. We have incredibly beautiful views as you drive down La Solas. They're expansive, they're broad. People walk to see those views. People just, you know, stand there and look. They pull their cars over to look. With this new plan, we're concerned that it will not have the space it needs to do what the plan actually is saying it will do. But more importantly, we're concerned that it will change that beautiful view corridor that's known as La Solas Boulevard. I would ask you, when there are parts of this plan that are, that you need to move ahead, and I would simply ask that you revisit a couple of issues. One is the curvy streets downtown, and the other, more importantly for us, is the, is the substitution of alternative four for the section on the Isles. It also includes opposing 16th, the closure of 16th Avenue, without further traffic studies and without further relief valves for the Isles, Isles. And I did not mention evacuation, but we, we know from what happens on traffic on weekends in our area, how backed up it gets. If we're down to one street to get out, that's one lane in each direction, that's a concern for us. And, and finally, I would thank Commissioner Sorenson and Vice Mayor Glassman for the many, many hours they put into this, as well as all of the people on the La Solas Mobility Group. It's been enjoyable to work with them, and my colleagues in Seven Isles, Riviera, Isle of Palm, I'm not of Isle of Palm, sorry, Isle of Venice, Hendricks, Nermi Isles, which is Fiesta and Nermi, and Royal Palms, and Idlewild, who have worked together for many months to put forward alternative four. I hope you will support us. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Clifford Sadekow, followed by Jim Carlson, followed by Elizabeth Lousky. If you could, two or three minutes, please. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Commissioners.
Hi, Clifford. Yes, we can hear you.
I want to say, start by saying I'm a little disappointed to see the idea being proposed for the La Solas shopping area. It seems a little bit more of the same. Too bad that we couldn't have an idea making La Solas pedestrian only similar to Lincoln Road. Still hasn't happened. I know it would be difficult and challenging, but I think we just needed somebody to think outside of a box as a way of making that happen. As for 15th Avenue, Fred and I are totally against putting all the traffic on 15th. It's been claimed 15th can handle the new traffic, which makes no sense because 15th can't handle the traffic today, or this past weekend. I'm against the city pandering to the four blocks east in Colehammock. Enough is enough. We all live in one city, and we all need to behave that way and respect our fellow neighbors, renters included. The city must stop impeding the residents on the beach and the aisle from getting to and from their homes by forcing them into traffic on 15th. We would like to see 15th southbound and 16th northbound only. This neighborhood should share the traffic together. If the city stops acknowledging cut-through traffic, an issue we've come, as an issue, we can become one community working together. Instead of fighting each other, who can come and drive through our neighborhood? Fort Lauderdale is no longer the bedroom community it was 30 years ago. And I just want to remind, you know, the Commissioners, there's more voters on the Isles and beach that are affected by this 15th Avenue, 16th Avenue, than there are in the four blocks of Eastern Colehammock. I want to thank you for your time, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak.
Great. Thank you so much. Jim Carlson, followed by Elizabeth Lousky, followed by Janet Gualtieri.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. It's a pleasure. My name is James Carlson. I live at 1601 Southeast First Street, which is the northeast corner of the intersection of Southeast First Street, Southeast 16th Avenue. Lived here since June 2012, when I was stationed here in the Coast Guard. I've since, we rented our house for two years, and I retired and bought the house. So this is our forever home. Getting right to the matter at hand, we speak in support of the Cordino Group Mobility Plan for the La Solas Corridor. I also submitted a letter yesterday on behalf of my wife and daughter that we'd like you to consider. Just want to offer a few points here this afternoon. We appreciate the holistic approach to mobility plan, mobility plan took on the entirety of La Solas. We appreciate the holistic approach, the mobility plan took on the entirety of Los Olas. Look, we live within easy walking distance of Los Olas. We visit the shops and restaurants, walk and bike to the beach. So the viability and commercial viability of Los Olas are important to my wife and I as homeowners. Primary concern we have, though, is the traffic trends we witnessed since we moved into our home. We see this on a daily basis. I noticed some anecdotes in my letter as a result of the cut through traffic between Los Olas and Broward Boulevards along Southeast 16th Avenue. Among those anecdotes was my dog getting struck right in front of me and dragged down the street by a speeding car between Los Olas and Broward Boulevard. Also mentioned the car spinning out after an accident and ended up on my front step. You know, with my dog, there was a point where I could have jumped in front of the car to try to get the driver's attention, but he was going too fast and he would have hit me. Full disclosure, the dog is okay. Thank goodness. But what I'm talking about here is something that Brad Tuckman, David Maya, and Tom Tarrington all talked about. You know, it's the safety, it's the speed, the weekend volume. I'm sorry, the traffic volume during morning and afternoon commutes, weekend afternoons and Saturday nights is markedly increased by traffic cutting through Los Olas to Broward Boulevard and Southeast 15th Avenue. But worse, it's not the volume, it's the behavior of many of the drivers cutting through. They speed, they don't stop at the stop signs, and some of the speeding is outrageous and plenty of my neighbors can validate this. Now, I note that the mobility plan also plans to improve traffic flow on Southeast 15th Avenue at Los Olas and Broward Boulevard. That'd be a key component to the plan. Other attractive feature includes the bike lane over Suspirro Bridge. I think Tom Tarrington talked about that. I myself have always been hit by cars, you know, trying to bike along that bridge. Now, I'll be blunt. From a micro view, my main ask is that the northbound turnoff Los Olas on the 16th Avenue be closed. That would need to be done with improvements to Southeast 15th Avenue. That would address the safety issues I've noted in my letter. But that said, in our view, the mobility plan has many other attractive features that balance appropriately the residential and business interests on Los Olas Boulevard, and we support its implementation. And with that, I appreciate your time.
Very good. Thank you so much. Elizabeth Lousky, followed by Janet Gualtieri, followed by Jaclyn Scott.
Hello. Thank you, everyone, for letting me speak. I appreciate it. My name is Elizabeth Lousky. I live on 99 Royal Palm. I've been a resident in Fort Lauderdale for three years in Hollywood for about 15 before that, and I grew up in Florida. I love this plan and many parts of it. I think the shops is great, the downtown. My biggest concern, and this has also been the concern of the Nermi Isles HOA, is our specific area, the Isles and the beach, and the safety issues. The traffic and the speeding, and specifically, I'm against closing 16th Avenue. 15th cannot handle the current traffic as so many of the previous speakers have said. The art festivals, the concerts, spring break, the hurricane evacuation. We can barely get out of here just on a busy weekend. And if you close 16th, it just seems like it's going to be a nightmare. I also echo David Maya's point about left-hand turns. On our area of the Isles, it's really scary and it's very dangerous, and I would hope that the plan takes that into consideration. The speeding, we need increased police presence. We need some traffic calming measures. People think it's a dragway. I mean, they drag, they speed down there. They have like races. And we've all seen people almost get hit or we've seen people been killed. It's really scary. As for seating areas, I understand our beautiful views and the area is open to all, but we do have a very bad loitering problem underneath the bridge right now. And I would hope that they would take that into concern, consideration also. And then finally, the EMS response time is very bad in the Isles, and I would hope with this new plan it doesn't get worse. These are issues we brought before, and I would like to reiterate, as I had a friend on Nermi call a few weeks ago and it took almost 15 minutes to get to her house. So that's my concerns. Again, I thought some of this plan is great and I appreciate all the hard work and efforts. I love change. I'm not afraid of change. I just think that even though it can be technically sufficient, sometimes things aren't an improvement, even if they are meeting different standards. I think sometimes we're making a bigger problem. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. Next is Janet Gualtieri, followed by Jaclyn Scott. And Jackie, you wanted five minutes because of the neighborhood, so that'll be fine.
Yes, Janet's online. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak at today's meeting. I really appreciate it. I've been involved, I live on Nermi Drive, and I've been involved in the joint meetings between the commission and the HOAs here for the mobility study. And I wasn't involved in the beginning. I just got involved back in October of this year. And but from what I understand, this started out to be a project for safety and increasing the healthcare response to our neighborhood along Los Olas Boulevard. And what I see from the Cordino Plan right now is more beautification and cosmetics improvements to Los Olas Boulevards with adding lookouts and replacing palm trees. And but what we really need are crosswalks, timely response to first aid, more safety precautions in our area. I would, I do, as Elizabeth just said, I look forward to change. I think some of the recommendations are absolutely needed. And I know the Cordino Group worked very, very hard in trying to get consensus from all of the people along the corridor. They actually had to deal with five different groups. So I appreciate the effort as a business owner of what they had to go through to build the consensus. I'm just concerned about our not having the components that we absolutely need. And that is safety. Getting in and out of our Isles, as was mentioned by prior speakers, is a nightmare. And reducing the lanes. I don't know if the speed, reducing the lanes would reduce the speed, but I'm thinking logically, reducing the speed would just add to traffic congestion. It was absolutely horrific trying to get my mother to a hospital this past weekend with all of the congestion on Los Olas Boulevard and 15th. So I'm concerned about closing down any cross streets that will allow access and for us to get out. If 16th was closed, for example, I would have never been able to get her there in a timely fashion. So I just think we need, before we approve, the commission approves the plan, we might need a little tweaking to make sure that our safety and the congestion is looked at. And I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Absolutely. Thank you for being here this afternoon.
Mayor, can I jump in?
Yes, sir.
Thanks. Thanks. I just wanted to jump in because I thought, you know, especially around safety, Janet was, you know, it's a very important point. And I know you're kind of, we've mentioned this before, Mayor, but it's really exciting. We're making really good progress on a EMS substation that would be on East Los Olas. That would be the possibility of a public-private partnership that would serve, you know, a chunk of the Isles and kind of East Los Olas there and really address those, what I think are kind of unacceptable response times. And I know Vice Mayor's, you know, working on that as well. So I think we got some exciting possibilities to really improve service there in addition to, you know, looking at this broader Los Olas vision for the mobility. Thanks, Mayor. I just want to share that.
Okay, thank you. Jackie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
This is my first time in the chamber since COVID. It's actually working quite nice, I might say.
You haven't changed.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I just want to start out by thanking Commissioner Sorenson and Vice Mayor Steve Glassman for going through this process over the last almost two years. And I also really thank the Cordino Group. Everybody's done a great job. I support the plan that the Cordino Group has come up with, is shown today. And I think they did a great job with putting all this together with all the competing interests, and I really appreciate it. When Colehammock entered this process, our number one concern was what is going to happen to Colehammock? As the Boulevard changes, as the Boulevard decides in the business district what they want to do, how is that going to affect us? So our number one goal was to protect Colehammock. The appeal of Colehammock, as most of you know, is the proximity to Los Olas, the beach, and our Oak Canopy. And the neighborhood has Southeast 15th Avenue dividing our neighborhood, and that is our corridor that connects Broward to Los Olas. Colehammock was one of the first 10 master planned neighborhoods in 1990 when the city commission decided that we needed to be master planned because we were so close to the downtown and the city was going to grow. Again, back then, our number one goal, cut through traffic. Things don't change in 40 years. But what we did decide as a neighborhood, and it's in the plan, is that the major connector between Broward and Los Olas, as relates to Colehammock, should be Southeast 15th Avenue. And there's nothing new about that. We were actually, as a neighborhood, sorry for the throg, frog, as a neighborhood, were able to convince Broward County to also take Southeast 8th Avenue. At the time, had no traffic lights, and they had the warrants, were able to put traffic lights at both ends. So between east of Federal Highway and 17th Avenue, we had two connectors. I want to show you something on Google Earth, if I may.
I used to have an office in that building.
Did you? So when you look at, when you look at, let me turn it around this way. I like to look at it this way. Everybody with me? Okay. So when you look at the neighborhood, here's 17th Avenue. Now we're going to go west to 15th Avenue, which is right here. Looking at the whole neighborhood, can you see the difference in the density? The area on the right, East 16th Avenue East, is loaded with single-family homes and it's a different zoning. As you go west, it's obviously far more density and a higher zoning. The other thing I want to point out is if you look at, if you look over here at like US 1, and then you go east, you can notice that the Himarshi Canal really protects the people in Beverly Heights. There's no cut through through Beverly Heights to get to Los Olas Boulevard. They have the Southeast 8th Avenue Corridor, which is right here. And then the only other corridor they had was simply blocked off to prevent people from cutting through Beverly Heights. So that kind of gives you an overview of the area. The Colehammock, Colehammock, God, this microphone's tough. What I want to point out about Colehammock is that I believe that what the Cordino Group has come up with, we can put the traffic on Southeast 15th Avenue. The improvements that they're coming up with. It's so important to protect the rest of the neighborhood. I think I'm very concerned about the speed on Los Olas, like many other people. And it's scary because everybody wants to go fast, but then they terminate onto a two-lane road. Whether it's Southeast 15th Avenue or Los Olas Boulevard is going to be probably two lanes. Therefore, we need to slow the traffic down ahead of time. Anybody that talks about the benefit of one-way pairs has never lived it. And anybody that's lived in Colehammock back in the 80s and the 70s, they know how two-way pairs, one-way pairs absolutely not only destroy the streets that people live on, they destroy everything that's in between. I think after 40 something years, don't you think it's time to quit band-aiding the area, solve the problem and put this issue to bed and let Colehammock thrive and continue to be a great neighborhood?
All right. Thank you, Jackie. That's
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Kathleen Oros, followed by Eric Chinagiewski and John Burns. Is Kathleen there?
I do not see Kathleen. No Kathleen.
No Kathleen. Eric Chinagiewski?
I'm not going to try to pronounce it, but Eric is here.
Yeah, this is Eric. I'm with the Cordino Group, just here for questions.
Okay. Did I come close to your name, by the way?
Yes, that was great, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. John Burns. Mr. Burns, are you there?
John is here.
John?
John Star 6.
Better?
Yes, sir. We can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I'm going to start from the west. I live at One Los Olas Circle. And I start from the shops area. In your 2021 City Commission priorities, you claim that you want to create a downtown urban core where cars are not required. So in the redesign of the shops area, I would certainly encourage that we go curbless because we do have a lot of events on Los Olas at the shops that close the street. And I would not like to see the word curb management necessarily mean a place to park cars. There's plenty of parking behind the shops. Let's try pushing the cars off Los, pushing the parked cars off Los Olas and behind the shops. The widening of the sidewalks and the 200% increase in sidewalk space will be great. Number two, moving to 15th Avenue, we do have to focus on fixing 15th before we even consider doing anything to 16th and 17th. We have to fix it. And I don't believe, although Cordino has recommended more discussions about it, we need to focus on how do we fix 15th.
How would you recommend fixing 15th as you state?
Well, right now, it's varying. In order to get the two left turn lanes going south, you're going to have to do something to widen the street. Back several years ago, when they put the bump outs on the intersections and they increased the swells with curbs, whether there's something else that will allow you to move traffic faster through that area by eliminating those swells, you can still keep the sidewalks. But the two left turning lanes will add a little bit, but it gets stopped up both ways. And you can say the same thing about Broward going west. In the afternoons, it backs up all the way to 15th Street. So there are some issues all along that particular route. Moving to the Isles, I believe you can save some money simply by painting the bike paths and doing, and giving the neighbors some crosswalks, slowing some of the traffic by raising some of the intersections, and specifically fix the sightlines on the Isles bridges. I mean, as a pedestrian there, frequent pedestrian, I know my Isles neighbors sometimes like me, but they try to aim at me with their cars as they're making left and right-hand turns. Add some shade trees. The Venetian supports alternative four. When you get to the bike path over the intercoastal bridge, the cantilevers is a good idea, but we have to remember that there is no bike path right now between the eastern part of the bridge and Seabreeze Avenue. And that is a big, that is a very heavily traveled area, whether you can take some space from the Canal Square Park. But that needs to be fixed, particularly when bikes come over the bridge and cars are trying to make a right from Birch onto Los Olas going west. That's a recipe for disaster right there.
Okay, John, that was three minutes. Did you want to wrap things up?
I'll wrap it up. The intersection at Birch and Los Olas, again, anytime you close Los Olas Circle, it's an issue getting to the garage. It's an issue for It's an issue for the neighbors in North Beach. Extending that median creates a problem and deserves more review. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have Steve Tilbrook, followed by Michael Waymoth, followed by Walt Collins. Steve, are you on the line?
I am. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for all your hard work on this. I want to particularly recognize Vice Mayor Glassman and Commissioner Sorensen for their outstanding leadership. I am just chiming in to say thank you to Cordino for their hard work on this project. I think it's really turned into a great job. It's really still in a conceptual phase in many respects. And when the actual engineering takes place, where pencil hits the paper, there will be some more tough decisions to be made. But I think it's really coming along well. I want to thank everybody for their help. And I am very supportive of the plan. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you. Mike Waymoth, followed by Walt Collins, followed by Ed Smoker, and Paul Chetl at the end.
Good to go. Thank you.
Mr. Waymoth, how are you?
Good afternoon. How are you? I was going to start out with thanking you for juggling the business section items in the conference meeting, but we'll take that off my list because that didn't happen. But thanks for the brevity on that.
I just want you to enjoy what we do here.
You were just teasing me, Mayor.
Yes.
All right, so folks, Mike Waymoth with the La Solis Company. Like everybody else, I'm going to burn a little bit of my time because I want to as well recognize the Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Glassman, Commissioner Sorensen, all the staff, literally from the City Manager, City Attorney. We've got a whole bunch of people, Anthony, Ben, Karen, engineers. Everybody participated over the two and a half years when we started this in 2018. So I'm here speaking on behalf of the La Solis Company. And because the La Solis Company owns a vast portion of the properties in the shops area. We own about 73% of the fundage there. So obviously, what happens in the shops area affects us tremendously. And that's how the La Solis Company got a seat at the table, at the big-boy table, two and a half years ago. I'm only here to talk about the shops area. I have intentionally not weighed in on other parts because everybody else is doing their part doing that. So let me quickly just recap a handful of things, and I'm going to step out of the way. At the very beginning, the Cordino Group, who has very thick skin, said nobody's going to get everything they want. And we all understood that. We all understood that. And we also all agreed, as the big-boy group, that we need a world-class design. I think they have done that. It has been pared back, people have weighed in, but I think they have done an exceptional job on that. The participation was to be limited to several groups. We had religious groups, we had business groups, we had neighborhoods, we had condos. We had all kinds of different people that were invited to a seat at the big-boy table to weigh in. Everybody else was also invited to listen in, but there was probably 20 or 25 groups that were selected. It was agreed that the input from the groups would be considered by the engineers, but at the end of the day, the engineers would come up with a design, both in what they heard and also in what can be done. So I heard somebody earlier say, and this is a change that I made. I want curbless, wavy roads through my area. It's a traffic calmer, wider sidewalks. It checks all the boxes for us. At the second-to-last meeting, come to find out, hey, we may need to have bollards if we're going to have curbless roads. I don't want to line La Solis with a bunch of bollards. So I shifted my position and said, okay, I can live with a curbed, wavy road. The wavy road slows all that traffic down. So in the end, that's kind of where, for us, we've landed and we've accepted it. The big ask that I have for anybody involved in this for the La Solis area, as everybody knows, Tunneltop Park is going to start in about a year. January is going to start. Commissioner Sorensen was very instrumental in helping us go from a little 50-foot park to 117 feet, just by trying to think outside the box and do something for a long period of time. So I ask, if this is going to get done, let's piggyback it to the Tunneltop Park so that we don't finish Tunneltop Park and then a year later, start redeveloping La Solis. It would just destroy the merchants who are already having a hard time. And to exacerbate that with two different major projects would be tough. So at the end of the day, I support the shops portion of the plan. I'm here speaking on behalf of the shops portion. So thank you.
Before you leave, Mike, it was pointed out to me, maybe you can help me through this, that if we should do a wavy road concept, it creates a pinch point at certain areas which prevents large canopy trees from being planted there because the amount of space that we have is narrowed significantly. And so the number of shade trees is going to be limited on the shops area. If we had a straight road, it would keep the distance between the edge of the road and the edge of the building uniform and consistent, which would allow, which will at the same time allow for larger canopy trees. Do you want to respond to that comment?
Well, I'll start with, I'm not a landscape architect, nor do I play one on TV. So my understanding is the trees, the amenities are going to be set back from the curb a certain distance. I don't know what that distance is. The other thing that we've always pushed for, the Polo, which I think God's going to speak to, Polo Group has always, from the outset, even the plan that we brought to you guys back under the previous administration, we've always insisted on instant-sized trees, huge trees, 500-gallon trees. So for the most part, all of the pinch points and the trucks and the traffic, hopefully by a lot of this, it'll send the traffics into the designated areas where they need to go and bring the cars and all. So I don't believe there's pinch points. I'm not an engineer. Cordino Group can maybe speak to that better, but I don't see it. The setback of the tree off of the curb, I would imagine, is about the same.
Also, wasn't the idea of having traffic one lane in each direction supposed to compensate for the speed? Wasn't that in and of itself supposed to slow traffic down? And I'm just, I'm wondering why we need that plus the curvy nature of it. I'm just concerned about, you know, backup traffic. I'm concerned about, you know, being able to navigate through the shops if you're trying to get from point A to point B. Do you feel that both are needed, both the single lane and the curviness in order to make this a more productive street?
I think, you know, it's sort of like you come up to a speed table, or I think even, and again, Cordino Group can speak to it, they just put paint on pavement and the visual slows people down. I think you come into the shops area, which is now going to be heavily pedestrianized. It already is, but it's even going to be more so. I think it will automatically get people tapping the brakes before they even get to it. I mean, imagine that you're at Third Avenue looking east, and the road shifts, I think it's four to six feet, it waves, all right? So you never not see down the middle. It's not a slalom course running the Black Diamonds. So as you look down there, you see, you see a lot more landscaping on both sides because the trees are following the street. So it almost looks like there's twice as much canopy as there is. I think it slows the traffic down the one way. We already experienced the one way. The only time you don't see the one way is from 3:00 in the morning till, I think it's 10:00 AM or something like that. And, you know, there's traffic there now. So it's not going to slow it down any more than where it already is.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, it's Ben.
Yes, Ben.
Hey, I think it's worth just digging into that a little bit more with, maybe with Cordino, if you're okay with that now.
Why don't we wait until the end? Ben, let's wait, let me, I just
That's fine. Yep.
Yeah.
It's all good. Thanks.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, I have a very specific issue on the plan. I live on Sunset Drive, which is where Four Seasons condo and Essex House and several other small condos are. And in the last iteration of the plan, they extended the landscape median in La Solis, you know, where all the Royal Palms are and so forth, down past Sunset to Riviera, which means that all of the shops, chimas, the gas station, the Marine Tower and everything cannot now make a left-hand turn onto La Solis. And I think what's going to happen is they're all going to take the easy way, which is to loop around to Sunset Drive, which is a very heavily traveled two-lane road. And they're going to try to make the left-hand turn at Sunrise and La Solis, which is at an odd angle to La Solis. And like I say, this is just in the last few weeks that I think this change has been made to the plans. And there was a very bad accident there about three weeks ago. Because what you have is you have nowhere in the center median to wait to make, to shoot through the east and westbound fast-moving traffic. And it's just, you make a leap of faith and try to go across and make that left-hand turn. And I think the median extension on La Solis Boulevard ought to be taken out and just leave the median where it is now. It ends, the eastbound end of it is Sunset Drive. And don't try to extend it all the way to Riviera. It just creates a tremendous, dangerous traffic issue. And it puts a lot of traffic on Sunrise Boulevard, which is already overloaded with traffic.
Okay, thank you. Ed Smoker, followed by Paul Chetl, and I was just handed one by Susie Bailey. Mr. Smoker, are you there?
I am.
Oh, there you are.
I'm here in person.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Trantellus, rest of the Commissioners, Vice Mayor Glassman. I want to reiterate the cooperation of having the Cordino Group and all the different groups that have been involved in this. A lot of people talked about this being a two-and-a-half-year process. We actually had our first meeting at Northern Trust back in the year 2000. And after being a 65-year-old resident here, I am appreciating the coordination of several groups that are coming together. A good deal is when nobody gets what they want, everything they want. And I think that's where we're at. I think that it's been an involvement with enough people and enough input with a professional design group that we are finally there. My greatest hope is that we do something with it because, as many of you know that have been here a long time, we've paid a lot of consultants, we've had a lot of plans. And I just hope that we can, for once, go through with something and really see the fruits of our efforts. So I encourage you. I did email a letter, I think you got it. If not, I have the original here. As President of the Polo Group, which is the property owners of La Solis, we had a vote. We unanimously approved the, or support the plan that was submitted by the Cordino Group at the last group meeting and hope that we can see this go forward. Thank you for all your effort.
Great. Thank you, sir. Paul Chetl, followed by Susie Bailey. Is Paul on the line?
Do not see Paul on the line.
You do not?
Do not.
Okay, maybe he'll come back. Is Susie Bailey there?
Susie is here.
Great.
Hi, can y'all hear me?
Hi, yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. Appreciate it. As the President of the Nermi Isles HOA, I've been attending the La Solis Mobility Working Group meetings for, wow, the past few years, as we all, as you've heard here. I've been at the table as a representative from the Nermi Isles, which include Fiesta, Nermi, and Royal Palm. We've had a number of HOA-recorded meetings to share the Cordino plans with our residents, one which included Mr. Cordino. After each of these meetings, we took a vote to see how many were in favor of the proposed plan or against it. At all of our meetings, our HOA residents unanimously opposed the Cordino proposed plan. As you've heard, there were like flyovers. There were a lot of unique things that were on them at first that you're not seeing now. So it was definitely important for me to bring this to, you know, to our HOA so they could see these, so that I could bring their feelings back to the table. Our HOA sent me, as I say, back to the table to request a less-is-best approach, especially in times like these where funding needs to go into areas of need, not on frivolous expenditures. Our residents are in favor of city money being spent in needed areas to update antiquated infrastructure and flooding issues. They also voted for a very much-needed satellite EMS station for the eastern area of this plan between Coley Hammock and the aisles. They voted in favor of important safety issues like crosswalks on La Solis Boulevard between Southeast 15th and Riviera, and dealing with those very dangerous blind-spot issues that John Burns was speaking of on the Northern Isles bridges. Both of these requests have been being made for years, not only for the safety of those living on these aisles, but for all of those visitors passing through. We've also asked for other options in dealing with speeding in this area, which we didn't receive. These important safety issues need to be addressed now, rather than included in the Cordino Plan, which could take years to begin. Our HOA voted unanimously in favor of the plan that the majority of our aisles, of the neighborhoods here, were in favor of, which was Alternative Plan Number Four, which also strongly opposes the removal of our iconic Royal Palms, opposes adding park-like settings, which include seating and viewing areas along the north side of the aisles. And they strongly oppose the closure of Southeast 16th Avenue, especially since the Cordino Group would not even explore the return of two-way pairs on Southeast 15th Avenue, a much less invasive and less expensive approach. Thanks to all of you. I know that we all have to agree to disagree at times. I really appreciate everyone's time and effort. I've met some wonderful people on this, and I thank you, Commission, for listening to all of us.
Great. Thank you so much. Got a couple more people here.
We have one call-in user that I think may be Mr. Chetl.
Is that Mr.?
Okay, yeah, we've recognized him, so
Is this?
This is.
Okay. Mr. Chetl?
Good evening, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Manager. Thank you for finding my number. I'm always a call-in number. Thank you, Mayor, for the meeting and for Commissioners Sorensen and Glassman for two-plus years of this. Firstly, right out of the gate, I'm one of those people that's opposed to the closing of 16. I want to get to the safety issues. Firstly, I'd like to point out that we have a problem with speed on La Solis, and I do understand why we're narrowing the lanes. I would like to point out that recently you had a Lake Ridge presentation, a complete streets, and there are some significant inconsistencies between the application of complete streets there versus La Solis, both 35 miles an hour, one with raised pedestrian, one without raised pedestrian, one with pedestrian signal, one without, et cetera, et cetera. And so I'm hoping that those things get resolved. In addition to that, obviously, we just heard from Commissioner Sorensen regarding the resolution of EMS, hopefully. And hopefully, that's an easterly station, not something west, but hopefully that works in our favor. And then, infrastructure. You obviously have a pressing issue with regard to a minimum of three years of infrastructure improvements. I agree with Mr. Waymoth regarding the timing of that is important and the impact on city restaurants, et cetera, is obviously very significant. Regarding the speed, just so you know, we pressed for a traffic study, which was ultimately done back in March of 2019. There were 271 speed violations in less than a week. Just so you understand how bad this was, for speeds of 61 to 65 miles an hour, there were 166 violations. For speeds 66 to 70, there were 57 violations. For 71 to 75, there were 30 violations. And for 76 miles an hour and faster, which is obviously a lot more than the 35 mile an hour limit, there were 18 clocked exceeding 76 miles an hour. So speed is an issue. You have a safety issue. That first group, I'm not really sure what is with the continuous personal attacks. I'm not really sure why that continues. But once you get past that and you look at their common theme, was all about public safety. And I would remind you that for over two years, all of the neighborhood associations along the aisles, on the north side, and Isle Wild on the south side, and the beach representatives, have had published meetings, minutes, recorded votes, presentations, came up with their own Alternative Four, which was presented, and I believe unanimously supported by a majority of the neighborhood associations. And that's what you asked for. You asked for public participation and public input, and there's overwhelming support for that. So I would just like to bring that to your attention, and thank you again for everything and for allowing the public to have input. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, sir. We have two others who've signed up, Jody Tanner and Bill Joyner, who I understand is in the audience. Is Jody Tanner on the line? Is Jody Tanner on the line? Is Jody Tanner on the line?
Jody's recognized. Star six, please, Jody.
Jody Tanner?
We've recognized her, Mayor. She's just remaining on mute.
All right, we can come back to her.
Okay.
Mr. Joyner? There you are. Go ahead, go ahead to the podium.
Hi, my name is Bill Joyner. I live at 646 Flamingo Drive, which is in the Riviera Isles area, and I just have a few comments.
Sure, go ahead.
I've been speaking to a lot of people that are living in the La Solis Isles, and they think this whole thing is white noise and that it's a fait accompli and that you guys have made up your mind.
Well, I can tell you.
And we're wasting our time.
Well, we haven't made up our mind.
Thank you for that. I oppose 16th being closed. 15th is a disaster right now, and 15th is going to take, I think, more money than we want to spend on it, because just condemning the amount of real estate to make the road usable is going to be enormous, and everybody is going to have their hands out. Cutting lanes down to 10 feet, I developed real estate, and I, all of my lanes in my shopping centers are 12 feet wide. There's a reason for that. A 10-foot-wide road, that's a foot on each side, because you can have an eight-foot-wide vehicle on that road. And having 10 feet is just absurd. Now, I'm not going to speak about La Solis shops. I mean, to me, that whole area from 15th West is a disaster. When we changed it to one lane going west at 15th, half the people get in the wrong lane and they just wedge their cars right into the middle of, and horns are honked. But I mean, that seems like it is a fait accompli, and nothing we're going to do about that. But I am against the median strip from Sunset to East and La Solis to Riviera Isles, wherever you're going to stop it. We just need more real estate than we do median strips right now. And that's basically all I have to say.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Is Jody Tanner last call?
We can try again.
Mr. Mayor, I'm here.
We are here.
Fantastic. Sorry, I had a little bit of technical difficulties.
Okay, go right ahead.
But first of all, my name is Jody Tanner, and I'm representing the La Solis Association. I'm the vice president currently, and I just wanted to weigh in and let you know that we, first, we thank you all. We thank the Cordino Group. We thank the city officials. We thank the residents and the merchants who have weighed in on this. We just basically want to tell you that the merchants want to see, you know, proper infrastructure, you know, a lot of these things that have happened on La Solis have done over numerous odd period of years, and things don't flow very nicely. So, you know, the residents and the merchants want to see something that's very smooth transitions in the five areas. We'd like to see the speed calming, which I think you were trying to address. We definitely want it pedestrian-friendly, because our goal is to drive traffic and to the Boulevard in a safe and exciting and, you know, entertaining way. And we just really don't want anything piecemealed. We kind of want everything done as a project, based project, not just in pieces. I think that makes a huge difference when things are coming together. And so I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the association, and we look forward to something really beautiful and safe for all our visitors and residents and businesses alike.
All right, great. Thank you so much for being here. Sure. Okay, that was the last person that asked to speak. Is there anybody else that has signed up to speak? There being none. All right, so Commissioner Sorensen, you wanted to ask Mr. Cordino some questions.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Joe, are you there?
Can you please come up to the podium? We're ready for you, Ben.
Perfect, thank you. Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Joe. Joe, let's talk a little bit about the wavy verse of straight portion of La Solis through the shops. So, correct me, just kind of pros and cons, and I think you did a good job in that analysis of kind of pluses and minuses for each in terms of kind of traffic calming, sidewalk space, and so forth. Couple of questions, and help me out with this if you know the answers. The trees, is, does the undulate, the wavy path reduce the canopy as, the, let's say that the actual canopy and the perceived canopy is the first question?
Here we go, sir. Sir, I don't believe so. I'm going to have Eddie Ning answer that question in greater detail. Eddie?
Okay. Thank you, Joe. The curve actually allows for the large trees at certain points, seen a drawing, to be, to have a larger canopy. And, you know, we've worked extensively with the city's forester to look at what would be allowed in the area. So we have variety of trees with different calibers, we put it, different canopy cover. So in the areas where there won't accommodate the larger trees, it, we have within the plant palette, smaller trees that will provide the canopy cover, and they can be spaced accordingly and provide the same cover. And exactly, we, in planning for this, we checked it against the city's adopted code, and it is permissible under the city's code and does provide for this.
Well, sir, we're not looking for permissible. We're looking for optimal. So if you're saying that we're stuck with smaller trees because of this, because of the smaller area in which trees can be planted, that responds then to the question, are we now limiting ourselves to larger canopy trees?
No, we're not, sir. And in all honesty, we want a variety of trees and not just the same type of trees. That's something we also discuss with the city forest as well, and that also promote the plant life within the area. Because the tree has a different canopy cover doesn't mean we won't achieve the same goal of achieving the optimal canopy we want. In this area, we're trying to prioritize the canopy over the pedestrian space. And in doing so, we're also looking at what you have to cover. At the less wide portion, you do need to just cover a little bit, you can cover a little bit less and accomplish that goal of prioritizing the canopy for pedestrian space. That being said, it can be arranged in such a way that you can optimize that canopy cover.
So how tall of a tree would be considered for a smaller tree? What kind of height are we looking at?
I'm going to have to defer to my landscape architect on that. I think he's trying to get on. There was a very easy sign-on link.
Is your landscape architect here today?
Our landscape architect is trying to log in online on the Zoom meeting.
Is he here online? All right, we'll get back to them.
Name it, Michael Bradley.
Mayor, while we're waiting for him, I can ask a few more questions if you like.
Please go ahead.
Good, thank you. Joe and Eddie, next question is, again, staying in that same portion of roadway, the, if we go with wavy, again, correct me if I'm wrong, if we go with wavy, that would be a loss of 68 parallel spots on the street versus if we went with a straight street, we'd have, we wouldn't lose the 68. Am I tracking that right?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. And what's, give me your, you know, I know we've mentioned this before, that you feel there are sufficient parking. I guess, so I guess two questions on that is, one, again, do you feel comfortable with the amount of parking we have if we lose 68? And then, two, does that negatively, does that negatively, does that loss of parking negatively impact traffic calming? And then the third question, I guess, around that is, what's the aesthetic impact of that? I mean, I would think fewer cars is better aesthetically, but give me a little more sense of that. Thanks.
Okay, sir, let me go back to the wavy versus straight. We're going to lose the 68 spaces regardless, because we're taking away the parking lane. So whether it's curvy or straight, the parking spaces will go away. I, we didn't do a detailed parking analysis or occupancy rate, but I do believe that from looking at this from 50,000 feet, there is enough parking in the area. I think maybe some of the property owners, the merchants are going to want to see, potentially see, more parking on the front of the street. It's typically token parking, and it doesn't necessarily mean that you don't have enough to satisfy the need of the people coming there. And I believe that that is the case.
Yep. Great. So again, and I think this was maybe a misperception out there, but we're losing 68 regardless whether we go wavy or straight, right?
That is correct, yes.
If we reduce it to one lane in each direction, correct?
Correct. We're taking the parking lane.
Yep. And I think, Joe, that's an interesting point, too, about what you said about, you know, the advantage for a merchant of having that car right, you know, pull right in front of your store. It's interesting, I haven't heard, that makes sense to me, but I haven't heard that from merchants that are saying, we're concerned about losing on-street parking because that easy access won't be there. It's just, I haven't heard that. So I think it just goes to your point that why, you know, this makes sense. Then, lastly, let me pause there. Do we have the forester on the line or the arborist?
Not yet. Keep going.
Not yet. Okay, great. I have some questions on the Isles, but I'm going to defer to Vice Mayor for, I'm sure he's going to want to, you know, talk through that and so forth. So I'll pause there, Mayor, for right now until we get the arborist and.
Okay, very good. Anyone else have, Mr. Glassman, do you have any comments?
Yes, I do. I also, while Joe's up there, I had some questions for him. Thank you, and hopefully you can hear me better. I'm hearing you guys better now. I think I worked out all of his technology issues.
Yeah, it's a lot better, Vice Mayor. It's a lot better.
Good. We can see a lot better. I'm happy to hear it. Thank you. Joe, you there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. What's the reason for the addition, and is it necessary, the extra median by Sunset to Riviera? What is the reason for that? Why do we need that?
Eddie, is that median still there? Did we not remove that in the last, the median from Sunset?
The new median, it's been addressed today by several people, and I have those same questions and issues. But I thought at our last meeting, I thought at our last meeting, you said that that would be revisited.
Answer the question about the median, the median in front of Chima, right?
Vice Mayor, are you speaking about the median in front of Chima?
Yeah, it's right. And today, we've had several speakers concerned about it and how it would impact, you know, coming out into La Solis and Marine Tower, and just that whole ingress egress of many people.
Yes, Vice Mayor, we did revisit it. What we heard in the comments, we interpreted as a concern about if fitting within that space. We did go back and review the space to see if the various components would fit, and it did. We certainly can review that again further, but we did hear the concerns and provided our recommendation accordingly.
Okay, good. And I just also want to reiterate, I know that, you know, whatever the commission decides, we're not voting today. Actually, this has to come to us at an evening meeting when we vote, and there is still time for some changes. And I think even beyond that, I mean, this is, correct me if I'm wrong, pretty much a conceptual plan. We have a lot of work to do still to refine it and to get the details. But I, before I get to some of those issues, Joe, talk to me about the traffic calming on the Isles. It's interesting, I was listening to all of the speakers, there is a certain inconsistency out there, because we've had a lot of people talk about the need to slow down traffic, the need for that as far as safety goes, but then yet also, at the same time, people said, we don't want to create more traffic congestion. It's hard to have it both ways, and I know that that's one of the reasons that you're narrowing the lanes, but if you could just discuss some other traffic calming measures on the Isles stretch? I mean, obviously, it's easy to see the traffic calming measures west of that, but I heard from so many people today about speeding and accidents and problems, but yet folks don't want to seem to slow down the traffic, so, because of congestion. So how do you reconcile those two concepts?
Well, to reconcile, to reconcile those two concepts is exactly why we've got the plan that we've planned for the Isles. First off, what we're trying to do is separate the bicycle lanes and the pedestrian from the automobile travel, because the automobiles just go way too fast to be immediately adjacent to bicycle lanes or pedestrian ways. So we're doing that. Number two, we've got the site triangles at the bridges, and people can't see the cyclists or the pedestrians, and they can't see the other vehicles. So we're going to improve those to the better site triangles, and everybody can see. They, people wanted to keep the median in the same space, but what we've got to do now to start to slow the traffic, to start to narrow the lanes down, and that plus the landscaping that we're going to put on the, on the street, on the sides, is going to be able to start to give the driver a more narrow field and give them the need to slow down to a more reasonable pace. And those are essentially what we're trying to do. By the way, we do have crosswalks at almost all of the intersections out there, and those are the things that we're trying to do to really slow down the road. Again, that road is the most, it wants to function as a transportation corridor more than any other section that we've got out there, and so when you add these things into it, you start to slow the driver down a little.
Okay, good. So you think all of those things working in conjunction with each other will do a good job, then, in terms of safety, slowing traffic, and basically giving us the results that so many people want in terms of safety?
Yes, sir. We're, by doing all of those things combined, we'll get the desired effect.
Okay, and I did want to just address a couple of other issues, because I heard some of these comments as well. I just want to make sure that everyone understands that right from the beginning, this was a mobility working group. So while we heard concerns tonight about EMS and infrastructure and drainage and engineering issues, much of that was really not in your scope, correct?
Yeah, that's correct, sir. We tried to note that in the very early meetings of this project. We couldn't, we didn't have the scope of services to deal with drainage. That's very expensive and very time-consuming, and it's best done in a later phase. Also, the EMS, we couldn't engineer that out of, we couldn't engineer better response times. That's only going to be done in a different way, perhaps the location of a station nearby. So those two things were absolutely not in the scope of services. We couldn't address them.
Right, and I just wanted to make sure that was clear for everybody, because I certainly understand that. That does not mean that the commission will not deal with those. Those are all very important issues, and just now, as we're dealing with Breakers Avenue on the beach, nothing's going to happen above ground before we make sure that those issues are taken care of underneath the ground. And that's when we will be bringing in our public works and our engineers and our folks to deal with that. And as Commissioner Sorensen said, he and I have already had discussions with developers about the very real possibility of an EMS substation on La Solis that will, that will work to the benefit of all and definitely cut down on what is now very unacceptable response times. So I just wanted to make sure people understood the scope of your work and what we're dealing with now, and eventually the commission will decide and discuss this plan. Two more comments I heard this evening that I want to make sure, this afternoon, that I want you to address, because I didn't think that that was even a consideration anymore. Do you see us removing mangroves and filling in water along the Isles on La Solis?
No, sir.
Okay, because I know that that was mentioned. I want to make sure that's really clear. I don't think anybody wants to see any of that happen, because we need the vegetation in our waterways. They serve a purpose. And obviously, I thought that we put that to bed a long time ago, that we're not going to be filling in any of the waterways to create any large areas of land, extra land. I just want to make sure that everyone is very clear on that. And again, just to echo what I said earlier today, and also Commissioner Sorensen's words, I want to say thank you to you and your team, because I do believe that you guys did go above and beyond the scope in terms of hours spent with the neighborhood. As many have already said, this was not an easy task dealing with five distinct areas, lots of interests that didn't always coincide with each other along the corridor. And again, I wanted to thank you for that, as well as Commissioner Sorensen and every single person who has expressed comments today and input today and all throughout these past two years. It's really terrific, the engagement that I saw, and I think that everyone needs to be applauded for that. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, sir.
And, and I think that everyone needs to be applauded for that. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're, you're very welcome. And actually it's been one of the most fun rewarding projects that, that we've ever done, just because that we, there was so much communication between the distinct groups. And obviously things don't go as smoothly as one would want, but that's how you get a productive project done. So it's been great from, from our point of view.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anybody else have any questions? Commissioner Moritas?
I don't. I do want to applaud the work of everyone on this great, um, plan. And I know you all have been working on it and I appreciate it. I know our neighbors do and our businesses. So I look forward to, um, voting on it soon.
Great. Commissioner McKenzie, have any, any thoughts you'd like to add? Any questions? Is he on mute? I can't hear you. What?
What was your question?
I was asking if you had anything you wanted to add to the discussion.
No, I'm just listening right now. I want to see what, you know, Commissioner Sorensen and the Vice Mayor has to say since they work so diligently on it before I give my input. I have worked with all the groups involved. And I took a tour as recent as yesterday to, uh, look at sixteenth, fifteenth, seventeenth, La Solis, but the whole nine have been following this, uh, way back, um, when you started it, Mayor. So just interested in, um, the final plan and, and, um, how we get there and make sure that, uh, we can, um, include as much as we possibly can from all and come up with a good plan for, for, um, all the stakeholders.
Okay, great. Thank you.
We have our tree guy on the line.
Oh, okay, great. Can you hear us?
Yes. Um, so Commissioner Sorensen, would you mind repeating the question?
Yeah, sure. Thanks. Thanks for joining, Michael. So talk to us as we look at the wavy portion of La Solis in the shops versus a straight portion. Talk to us, uh, what is the differing landscape impact to trees on wavy versus straight? Which can have more, which would have, uh, bigger or smaller trees? Can you walk us through that?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so with the straight, straight path, you're losing a bit more space, um, for, for landscaping. And with the curvature of the roadway and that further expansion in those areas, you're getting a larger space for much more canopy. So in those strategic locations, what we're proposing is that's where your large trees are. Your live oak, your gumbo limbos, um, possibly Paradise Tree as well. And that's where you're going to get more of a true canopy road feeling. Similar to what's out there now with the black olives to where you'll get borderline full coverage. In some of the smaller areas is where we're, you know, where the, where the right of way thins is where we're promoting, um, proposing various, uh, smaller trees, you know, your flowering accents. But these are still going to be providing ample shade. You know, the wet, the, the species that we've chosen have about a minimum, you know, ten to fifteen foot spread. So they're going to be casting, you know, quite a bit of shade. Ultimately, you know, as Ed had said before, our goal is to primarily shade that pedestrian usage, which will be maintaining cover. And as I said before, throughout the corridor, you will be getting those moments of true canopy road feeling.
Right. And so the, the, basically the canopy coverage would net be bigger with waved versus straight? Is what I'm hearing.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Great. All right. Thank you, Michael. Uh, Mayor, that, that was it. Thank you.
Okay, great. Mr. Cordino, can you come back up to the podium?
Yes, sir.
So, um, first of all, again, thank you for all the work that you did on behalf of the city.
Pleasure.
And for engaging all of our neighbors. Uh, this has been a, uh, very difficult task. You have a, a street with, and with neighbors with a lot of differing opinions. So I, I, you know, no one's going to get everything they want, but certainly we're going to try to, um, extract from this effort the best of what we can. And, and, you know, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. We'll keep, we'll keep going, right? Because, you know, Fort Lauderdale is a growing city. It's evolving. And our needs will continue to change as life goes on. But let me just ask you a few questions because I'm, I'm a little, um, I'm not sure if I understand some of, uh, the recommendations. Let's start with the, um, the closure of sixteenth avenue. Now, it's my understanding that the reason why the folks who live on sixteenth avenue and also on Second Port and Second Street, um, want that closed because there's a lot of cut-through traffic. They don't want to wait to get down to fifteenth avenue or they're not wanting to get, um, held up by fifteenth avenue. So if there are cars that are going through sixteenth, will now be pushed back onto fifteenth. Do you feel that based on the quantity of vehicles that travel both roads, that fifteenth alone would be able to accommodate all the vehicular traffic that, uh, is currently exists and that is anticipated in the future?
Yes, sir. I think fifteenth will be able to do that. Uh, if we do the improvements that we've suggested throughout this, uh, entire project, it will handle it. The traffic study shows that fifteenth will handle it, um, in the future at, at the, an appropriate level of service. The trick with these corridors is particularly at the intersections. I mean, if you, the, the, the clogs come at the intersections really where the traffic starts to bog down and stop. If you do the dual lefts and then you do a parallel improvement at Broward, the, the road will flow. There's always a tendency to want to take a shortcut. And our approach here was to, uh, kind of funnel the traffic to fifteenth because we know it can handle it into the future and protect the, the character and the quality of life in the residential portion of the neighborhood.
Now, are you looking to eliminate some of the, I mean, recently we spent a lot of money on fifteenth. And, uh, it actually narrowed fifteenth, which was a little bizarre, but we narrowed fifteenth a little bit. Are you recommending that we widen fifteenth at all to accommodate an additional lane of traffic?
Not right, not at this moment. I mean, the, the other option as you go forward is to, is to widen fifteenth. But as somebody mentioned today, uh, right now, we don't believe it's necessary because the, the, uh, the road will handle it going into the future and it, and it will be at a very expensive proposition.
So, um, if it's determined that fifteenth cannot accommodate the traffic that currently is there or that can be anticipated in the future, does, uh, do any of your thoughts give expression to adding another, another road, creating a one-way pairing, like fifteenth going one way and another road going another way? Is that, is that anything that you would anticipate as being a possible, um, alternative going into the future?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. It's possible. And, and there's no question that one-way pairs would, would dramatically improve traffic flow. What they'll also do is destroy the character of a residential neighborhood. They are very efficient at moving traffic and moving traffic very quickly. And, and my opinion is now you don't need it because fifteenth works. And.
There are a lot of people who've lived in this city for decades who, who have never felt fifteenth work. And now you're saying, oh, let's just, let's just constrict the flow of traffic even more onto fifteenth. And you're saying it's, it's going to work even though we don't think it works now.
Yeah. I, and, and we can get, I, I, if we had more time, we can get into all the, the traffic analysis and the level of service.
Do you live here?
No, I, sir, I do not live in Fort Lauderdale.
Okay.
I have an office in Fort Lauderdale, but I do not, uh, live in the neighborhoods. But, but, but being what it, what it is, um, you know, from a, from a technical point of view, uh, the road works. It, it's, uh, I think that you, you need to balance, again, this is a policy decision, purely a policy decision.
No, it's not a policy decision.
I mean, traffic.
Your expertise to guide us into the way in which to accommodate.
Absolutely. And, and in our opinion, in our expertise is the traffic works on fifteenth and it will into the future. Other than that, it's a policy decision. If you, if, if you feel, uh, for some other reason that it doesn't work, there is the option of widening fifteenth or, uh, inserting parallel, uh, parallel pairs, one-way pairs into the neighborhood. From a traffic planning, traffic engineering perspective, the one-way pairs will do more to ruin the character and the quality of life of that neighborhood than, uh, a one corridor, right? Because you're spreading the traffic. I know question it moves traffic much more efficiently. Uh, but again, you're running it through single-family and kind of multifamily residential neighborhoods, which make the flow much faster. Um, a lot of cut-through traffic, a lot of speeding. And so those are, those are the policy issues that one has to deal with in that respect. The technical advice is there, the data and analysis is there to support it. But again, that now, now it's on the table for, for a, a policy decision.
Did any of your analysis, um, contemplate alternatives that might include alternative, you know, one-way pairing? Or was that outside the scope of your?
No, we did, we did not, uh, we did not, we did not study the one-way pairs. We took that off the table very early because we, we understood what it would do to the neighborhoods. And I think it was tried there before, was it not? The one-way pairs, one-way pairs were out there at a certain point in the past.
So what do you say to the people that live on fifteenth? In which now all the traffic is going to be guided to that street? What do you say to them about the quality of life that they have who live on fifteenth avenue? Most of which are, well, they're single-family and apartment buildings too.
Yeah, I believe that fifteenth is the, is the primary conduit right now. And I think we're letting fifteenth do what it is supposed to do right now.
Right. But, but you're, by adding even more cars to the road. And, um, and, um, with the, um, and with the side streets also had now having to wait for all that traffic to pass, uh, since we don't have a stop sign there anymore. How do we answer to those neighbors who are wondering, you know, how do they get in and out of their neighborhood?
I, I believe that, um, again, the traffic flows effectively, fifteenth is the conduit. And I, I think that everybody will be able to get in and out of the neighborhood, um, as efficiently as possible. You know, I think that, uh, if you needed to do warrants for stop signs or other traffic control devices, you know, those would be something that could be done. And they put them in when needs warrant. Those types of operational improvements can always be studied and you can always look to improve the facility, uh, as time goes on and you meet the, meet the warrants, you can insert those things into the street.
Okay. Um, now with regard to the, uh, the design of the, of the street going through the shops, what was the idea of coming up with a, I'm not quite sure I understand why the serpentine design was, was, uh, was recommended?
Well, I think originally we had a curbless street, uh, and, and it was, uh, and it was curved as well. And it was more of a festival street that was iconic in nature. It was something different that you didn't see all the time. With the curbless, you could close it and capture almost all of the space for a big weekend or a festival. And then you could open it up and then you could see, then it could be, uh, open for, uh, vehicular traffic again. So it was just kind of a hybrid. It did a lot of different things and it was more iconic.
To have the, that design as opposed to just a regular straight street?
Correct. I mean, one of the, but one of the things that we started with from the stakeholders in the area was the fact that they wanted to capture, get rid of the median, capture a lot of that space that was shading, uh, automobiles and push it to the sides for the sidewalks so that they could, uh, use it for whatever they want to use, more pedestrian area. And I think with the curvy option we first looked at, I think they would gain two hundred and sixty percent more pedestrian space. With the straight options, either one curbed or curbless, I think we accomplished the main goal anyway. It's two hundred percent more pedestrian space. When, when, when you asked us as urban designers, which one we preferred, curvy or straight, uh, it was, it was easy for us. The, the curvy was just a more iconic street. It gave you more options out there. It had, it had, um, no necessary negatives from a design point of view, and we chose to make that recommendation in absence of consent.
Do you know of any other cities that have a similar type street with a similar type design?
Yeah, Eddie, there's one at Fort Lauderdale. This is the one recently, Ed, Ed's got the list of the ones, uh, that we have. And, um, we've looked at those before. They, they seem to, uh, work. Some of them, I know a concern was bollards. Uh, without the curbs, there is a need for bollards. We checked, um, you know, maybe the state doesn't have necessarily need for bollards. I think the city does require bollards. So we couldn't tell exactly where you wanted to put them on the curbless variety. But we can, Ed, you, you have a list of the streets that we looked at. Eddie, you have a list of the streets that we looked at that are curb, curb, uh, curvy rather? Well, we'll get, we'll get you the list.
Because you got to, I'd like to, I'd like to see how other cities have adapted to that, to that design.
Yeah, okay, we can.
I've been to a lot of cities in my life, never seen this before. So I'd like to, I like the opportunity to see how they've worked in other cities.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get you a, a kind of a pocket report on, on, on those types of streets.
Okay. Um, so, uh, now, now we're going to be, according to Commissioner Sorensen, we're going to be losing several dozen parking spaces.
Yes, sir.
And, um, you know, there's another adjacent city here called Wilton Manners, which also narrowed their street down to one lane in each direction with a center turning lane. And, uh, but as a result of that, they've added parking spaces, on-street parking spaces. So, and you're, are you saying tonight that the merchants on La Solis are, are content with the loss of sixty-eight parking, was it sixty-eight parking spaces?
Yeah, sixty-eight.
They're okay with that?
I, I have not heard to the contrary, and I should have by this point. So nobody's.
So unless people spoke up to you, you're assuming they're okay with it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to, yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. Um, let's talk about bike paths. Now, I guess at one end of the street towards the, the, the most western part of the street, you're looking to add, um, bike lanes to that area. Is there any thought being given to instead of putting the bike lanes on La Solis per se, but put them on a side street where it might be safer? What are your thoughts about that?
We, we were, uh, we, we considered that and, uh, we met with the DDA and, and they were very concerned about that. And their main issue with, uh, not having them on La Solis was they didn't want to take away from the pedestrian area. And we were able to confirm that we didn't take any space from a sidewalk or anything like that to keep the bike lanes on there. Putting it on a parallel street is a, is a, is a, still a good way of doing something. We wanted them on La Solis for continuity, uh, as much as we could through the entire corridor. And then we were able to, essentially La Solis works as, uh, the central hub. And, and so, um, you could connect with all the bicycle facilities that were out there, the different trails and paths and then destination locations, um, through La Solis. And that was our school of thought for wanting them on the corridor. It's perfectly acceptable to have them on a parallel street. We thought this time because of continuity stake and because we had the space that it would be, uh, most appropriate. And that is the iconic street that we're looking to do mobility on and have mobility for all modes, bicycle, pedestrian, transit and automobiles. And it works.
Okay. Um, and just one last question with regard to the area we were talking about just a few moments ago near, um, uh, near Sunset Drive. Is the, so I used to live over there, so I'm just somewhat, somewhat familiar with the area. So by extending the median, and you can't take, I guess as you're exiting Sunset, you can't take a left because there'll be a median blocking you. Is that, was the idea to push the traffic onto Riviera Isle where there's a traffic light? And so that way it would be safer to exit the, uh, the area? Is that, was that the?
No, I, I don't believe that. I don't believe the idea. What we're trying to do is continue the continuity further east along the street with the same, uh, kind of iconic look. We did commit to going back and looking at, see if there were any operational deficiencies with the median. I don't believe we've completed that yet, but we'll look at that. Uh, what we don't want to do necessarily is force people have any unintended consequences. We don't want to force them down the wrong street. We don't want to force them down into, uh, a, a street that, uh, doesn't need the traffic or, or into a position where they're going to have to do something unsafe to make the movement that they want to make. So we're going to go back and explore that and make sure that we've not created any, what we'll call operational problems in the process.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anybody else have any further questions?
Mayor, I just have one final comment, if that's okay?
Sure, go ahead, Ed.
Thank you. Um, and Chris, this is for you because this came up at our last, uh, meeting on the eleventh as a group. And, and also I've had these conversations with Ben Rogers. Because the aisle section has been clamoring for these crosswalks for years and years and years and years, way before this commission was seated. And, and we know that that's a long process and, and we still have to get that into the budget for this coming fiscal year. And then I know there's usually a wait for those kinds of things. And, and I would just ask you to take a look because I think that that safety issue, um, on the aisles is so very important. And if we're going to be doing some of the other things that Joe mentioned in terms of the bridges and sightlines, I, I think it's really important that we at least look at how we can get these crosswalks done, uh, sooner rather than later. And, and I would just appreciate if we can get some movement on that. And, and that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. So where do we go from here, Mr. Lagerbloom?
You know, so I guess we'll take this report from here. I'm not hearing that there's any major objection to any parts of it that it needs to be amended. We'll bring it to the commission and then end up adopting it by resolution so that we can actually start to then take it to the next.
All right. So we'll have, again, we'll have another public hearing then if we do it by resolution. Okay.
Correct. And then obviously we need to start figuring out how we build certain portions of it and what phase it happens in. what phase it happens in.
And who's going to pay for it?
There's always that discussion to be had as well. And I think there's multiple different funding sources and opportunities out there. We'll just need to pick the right balance to, to put that, put that together.
Okay. All right. Any further questions with regard to this? Okay, there being none. Thank you all for being here. I appreciate all the callers who are participating. Thank you all from the Cordino Group and really thank you again and we'll hopefully move this process forward. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
I do. In the interest of our time tonight, no, I've, just what I met with the commission on yesterday probably is sufficient. We do have that one communication to the commission.
I was going to get to that in a moment.
But no, I'll, I'll reserve any other comments.
Okay, great. So we had one communication. I don't have my computer with me, so I, it was the, which board was it?
Historic Preservation Board.
Oh, Historic Preservation Board. And the board wanted us as a commission to recognize the great work of Trish Hogan and, and I guess we do. Do you have any comments you'd like to make, Vice Mayor?
Yes, actually it's Logan, not Hogan, just so you know. And I, I, and I could not agree more. I, I know that at past meetings, Commissioner Maritis and Commissioner Sorenson have brought up emails we've been receiving from Sebo Ben. And I would just hope that they took the time also to read the backup of that meeting of February 1st, when the HPB actually recognized the work of Tricia Logan because they also made a lot of comments about the, the actual ordinance rewrites moving forward and how there was some misinformation out there. And they addressed some of the things that I know that my colleagues were concerned about. So it's really worth reading those February 1 meeting minutes of the Historic Preservation Board. And I, I could not agree more with them. She has been a great addition to the city. I remember when we were all trying to get a Historic Preservation Planner as a liaison, someone with that expertise. So we're very fortunate. And I think the HPB made the right call in, in asking us to recognize her. So thank you, Mayor.
Okay, very nice. Any further business of the conference meeting? There being none. Meeting's adjourned, so you all at 6 o'clock. Thank you.
We need to do the CRA.
Oh, we have CRA. Hey, don't go away, anybody. We have a CRA meeting. Thank you very much. Welcome to the Community Redevelopment Agency Board, meeting of February 16, 2021. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Maritis.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Glassman.
Here.
Commissioner McKenzie.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson.
Here.
Chair Trent Hales.
Yes, here, thank you. So let's move on to M1, motion approving minutes for February 2nd, 2021 CRA board meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Do I hear seconded? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Maritis.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson.
Yes.
Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner McKenzie.
Uh-huh, really, Jeff?
Yeah. I read out of order. I got ahead of myself there. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Vice Chair Glassman?
Here.
It's not here. It's yes or no to approve the minutes.
See what I started.
Oh, I thought this, I thought this was our attendance.
We already took attendance.
That's good. Okay, then yes.
Chair Trent Hales.
Yes, thank you. M2, motion approving budget amendment, transfer of funds from mitigation account to made-to-move grant project. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
The move is seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Here. Yes.
I was gonna, Commissioner McKenzie, I was gonna do that. You stole my, you stole my line.
I rescind it. I rescind my yes to, here.
Oh, here to yes.
Commissioner Maritis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Glassman?
Yes.
Yes, and M2 is approved. R1, okay, so this is a resolution authorizing the acquisition, closing cost demolition and due diligence of real property located at 408 Northwest 14th Terrace, formerly known as the LA Lee YMCA site and 422 Northwest 14th Avenue for the sum of $560,000. It's 560. And delegating authority to the executive director to negotiate and execute the purchase and sale agreement and any other documents related to this transaction. Executive Director is City Manager, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Is there a mo, is there someone like to introduce the resolution for discussion?
Yes, you do.
It's been introduced. So Clarence, you want to come up here and explain what we're doing here? How this money is going to be used?
Mayor, if I will, if I can, when, as Clarence approaches, this one had a memo update on it. I just wanted to point that out.
And what did that say?
I sent that. It, it.
Added Exhibit 7.
Right.
It just added, made reference to the addition of Exhibit 7.
Uh, no, this one.
Oh, it brought it up to 600,000 from 560.
Oh, it's 600,000 now?
Yes.
Yeah, but, but tell them what, what that entails, so you'll know.
That's what we're here for. Let's, tell us, tell us the story behind this.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission, city manager, Mr. Attorney. This, this item is the purchase of the old LA Lee museum as we stated. The purchase price is $500,000. What we look to do is to add additional housing within the redevelopment area. $500,000 is the purchase price. The additional $60,000 of that 60, 40,000 is for the demolition of the building. That additional legislation that we just talked about is another $40,000, which will be given from Y for the total cost of demolition, which is actually $80,000. So that additional $40,000, which brings it, brings it to 60, um, 600,000 dollars, is money from the Y for the demolition of the building. The demolition of the building in total is $80,000. Okay? 40,000 of the 560 is the other half of the $80,000 for the demolition. The other $20,000 is for survey, environmental and other closing costs.
So let me ask you a question. Tell us why we are buying this property and why we're not, why, why it's not being just put on the market for resale?
Uh, well, the Y had it on the market for resale. We believe it gives us an opportunity to add additional affordable housing in, in the redevelopment area.
So how many houses do you think you can get on this site?
Uh, if it stays single-family, we can get anywhere from 10 to 12 houses, single-family houses on, on this piece of property. But if we were able to get the zoning changed, the idea is still to do housing, but we would do a townhouse community and we possibly can get about 20 to 22.
Okay. And, okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions of Clarence?
I do. I mean, if the YMCA is selling it to us, why do they have to pay to have it demolished? Why don't we just buy it and we do with it what we want?
Well, we're splitting the cost of demolition.
Right. I'm saying, why do they have to pay for it? They're selling it to us. We buy it and we do.
It's part of the deal.
Right.
Because Clarence is a hard bargain.
They do a lot of great work in our community and I just prefer that we just buy it from them and don't make them pay as part of the deal. Commissioner McKenzie? What's going on?
Here's the problem. As you know, they have had this property on the market. There's no appetite to buy because it has a non-conforming use to. So you can't bring a commercial ITT in there and do anything. And then the neighbors, the reason why we started this process was to take this commercial building out of the center of a neighborhood, put it on the corridor for all to partake in. And since they had a tough time selling, and we were sitting at the table, those are one of the incentives YMCA offered for us to, to get this deal done and create this workforce housing piece back there on a, on a large parcel with contiguous spaces.
Hey, I think it'd be great to put 20 townhouses on the site. I mean.
I agree with you. I'm just saying, I'm not sure why they have to pay to make it happen. Why don't we just, why don't we just buy it from them?
We are buying it from them. They're just helping us with the demolition as part of the closing costs.
Part of the deal.
Worth the 600, then we should pay 600.
They're very, they're very happy because if we didn't take their 40, we would negotiate in the price to do this.
Right.
To make the housing affordable.
You're just negotiating the price, basically.
Yeah. So we did get two appraisals. The Y got an appraisal and we got an appraisal. And both appraisals were at $500,000. So that is the value, yeah, that is the value of the property.
We're paying a little bit more, but we're including the demolition as part of the additional fees.
Right.
Up to almost 600, which is why they're kicking in a little bit. Okay.
Yes. And Mayor, I just wanted also to remind Commissioner Maritis, we were very generous. We actually, we, we put $10 million in towards the project. I, I think you have to understand that that's a very nice, strong commitment on behalf of the city.